Oh, okay. Then, hey, I don't, I don't, I didn't see the holiday.
Welcome, everyone. I'm going to call the April 16th regular city council meeting to order. I'd ask those who'd like to join the council, myself, and the pledge of allegiance to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item this evening under special business is AB 7583, Earth Day proclamation. I'd like to invite John Huckstra, executive director, and Tor Bell, field program director from Mountains to Sound Greenway Trust, to join me at the lectern to receive the proclamation. Tor and John, thank you very much for coming this evening. Whereas the global community now more than ever faces extraordinary challenges such as climate change, global health issues, environmental degradation, food and water shortages, and economic struggles, and whereas local communities can lead the way in taking such steps to protect and preserve our natural resources and wildlife by encouraging energy and water conservation, waste reduction, environmentally sound land use, pollution prevention, habitat restoration, and non-drive-alone transportation traces, and whereas the city of Issaquah is a regional leader in promoting sustainable living, and whereas Earth Day offers residents of all ages a unique opportunity to make a personal commitment to practices that are vital in protecting the quality of human life and other life in Issaquah for generations to come, and whereas the city is celebrating 25 years as Tree City USA and is joined together with Mountains to Sound Greenway Trust, Lake Simamish State Park, and volunteers to steward public lands on April 21st in celebration of Arbor Day and Earth Day, now therefore I, Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the city of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2018, to be Earth Day in the city of Issaquah and urge all residents to celebrate the special observance and further to pledge to take action together so that we can contribute to a healthy environment and make Issaquah an even greater place to live, work, play, learn, and visit. Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
I would love to. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Polly, and congratulations, city of Issaquah and citizens of Issaquah. This is amazing. 25 years as Tree City USA. It's a great accomplishment. And on behalf of the Mountains to Sound Greenway Trust, we'd also like to say thank you for your partnership. We've been working with the city of Issaquah for more than 20 years, restoring native habitat, planting trees, cleaning up and restoring the stream habitat. That is one of the reasons that Issaquah still has wild salmon swimming back into your city year after year. It's a real testament to not just the spirit of Earth Day, but I think also its intention that Issaquah is walking the walk and demonstrating how do you have a sustainable city in these kinds of activities. Over 20 years, you can now, you could take a walk from here, I know there's a couple tricky road crossings, but you can take a walk from here all the way to Lake Simamish State Park. And as you go along there, you can see what 20 years of riparian restoration starts to look like, from the very newest plots that are being cleared and getting ready to be planted this year out to the kind of very first forest that we helped plant in the city of Issaquah. You can see how forests grow up over time and get a feeling for what's been accomplished over this time that Issaquah's been a tree city. And it comes because of all of you. It comes not because somebody did it for you. It comes because citizens came forward and put in their own time, their own energy, their own heart and soul. Over these years, we've had, Tor will correct me, I'll knock him on the shoulder if I get the numbers really radically wrong, but thousands of volunteers have come out and given tens of thousands of volunteer hours of labor and planted more than 100,000 trees in the Issaquah Creek Basin. So it's really extraordinary what's been accomplished here. We're very, very happy for you. We congratulate you on this accomplishment, and we look forward to working with the city for another 20 years to see what else we can do together to make the future of Issaquah and the Mountains to Sound Greenway truly sustainable for generations to come. I'll also let Tor lean in. In the spirit of this proclamation, there is an opportunity on Earth Day to come out and be part of this, so I'll let Tor tell you about what that is.
Yes. The Simamish Cove, adjacent to the state park, from 10:00 to 2:00 this Saturday. You guys are invited and encouraged to come out. We'll be doing some trail work, planting some trees, and doing some maintenance on some older trees that we've planted. So encourage you all to come out and have an opportunity to pitch in and really, you know, continue the environmental restoration out there throughout the city.
Thank you. Thank you, Tor and John. Our second item under special business this evening is AB 7590, the 2018 legislative session summary and, after that, an appreciation for Doug Levy. I'd like to invite the city's lobbyist, Doug Levy, to the lectern. Doug will provide a recap of the 2018 legislative session.
Thanks so much, Mayor, and council members, and staff, and community. Good to be here tonight, and I was asked to give you a little bit of a blow-by-blow of the 2018 session. We'll try and keep it fairly brief and give you some of the headlines and then get into how things went for Issaquah on the 2018 agenda. First off, I'd tell you that this 60-day session, which ended on time, that was the first time in several years the legislature had finished on time, was what you would call an activist session. You know, however you feel about the things that went into and came out of the session, a very frenetic session, 308 bills passed by the 2018 legislature, so that compares to about 317 in 2017, which ran several months. So that gives you a sense of the number of bills that were churning through the system in 2018. The legislature made a decision to try and get into compliance in 2018 with the K-12 McCleary decision, I think blessed by a very, very good economy. Remember that the state actually had a couple of billion dollars of extra revenue over the four-year period to work with. They put about $1.2 billion of additional money into the K-12 system. About $776 million of that was in upgrading teacher salaries, also some significant money in special education. And obviously, if you've been tracking the headlines, we'll see if the state has successfully made its case with the courts that they've fully complied with McCleary. A lot of other bills that had been kind of pent up and not quite getting to the finish line the last several years did in 2018. Things like a breakfast after the bill, excuse me, breakfast after the bell piece of legislation, an equal pay bill, the Voting Rights Act, several others. I would say, and we'll get into this under our agenda, but for, in areas like affordable housing, homelessness, mental health, a very robust session, a lot of important things passed by the legislature. Also, in the area of public safety, the legislature did a bill on body cameras that I think will make it much, much more palatable, much easier for local governments to get into the business of deploying body cameras if they so choose. And on use of force, we saw something rather unusual, and pretty controversial, actually, but the legislature took an initiative filed to the legislature by a group called De-Escalate Washington. And, you know, in all my 20-plus years running down to Olympia, what normally happens with initiatives to the legislature is that they send those straight to the following November ballot. In this case, the legislature enacted Initiative 940. They also enacted House Bill 3003, which comes about 91 days on the heels of the initiative and amends it according to a compromise worked out between De-Escalate Washington and public safety and domestic violence groups and a number of others. So pretty important pieces of legislation, to say the least. I think before I get into sort of the Issaquah story, the other thing that I would tell you is that, you know, we're going to be in a midterm election year, so we'll have a lot of battleground election races between now and November and obviously on Election Day. So remember that we still are in a very narrowly divided legislature. It happened to be the first in a while where it was both a House and a Senate Democratic majority, but that was only 50-48 in the House for Democrats and 25-24 in the Senate. A very important narrow majority, but a narrow majority nonetheless. And so a lot of districts, this one in the fifth, we'll see some important races, the 45th legislative district in that whole Redmond, Woodinville, Kirkland, Carnation area, we'll see some important races in the 44th district in Snohomish County, and the 28th down in the South Tacoma Lakewood area. So a lot of big races to watch to see how that 50-48 and 25-24 changes. I think if you look at conventional wisdom, you would say the chances are decent that the Democrats might add a couple of seats in both the House and the Senate, but conventional wisdom can be right and it can be wrong. So we take that with a grain of salt, and we'll see how these next several months go. I think for Issaquah, you know, what I feel really good about on your behalf is that you had a really good session. I will be getting you a very comprehensive report before May 1st that goes into, in intimate detail, how you did on your agenda and bills that passed and didn't, and, you know, where there are some funding opportunities in front of you and some interim studies to keep your eye on the like. But, you know, at a high clip, remember that one of the things we did was we wanted the legislature to finally get a 2017-19 capital budget enacted. You know, for the first time in several decades, the 2017 legislature had gone home without a biennial capital budget being enacted, and it was embroiled in a controversy with an unconnected water bill that became politically connected to the budget. Well, the legislature in the first couple weeks did pass a two-year capital budget, so that gave us a little over $200,000 for Confluence Park and then just under $5.4 million for Lake Simamish State Park. So good things coming out of that capital budget early in the session. And then on some of the things that the city asked for within the 2018 budgets, some really good results. One of the things was that we had tried in 2017 and come close. We wanted to get a little bit of seed money for your innovation partnerships own designation for sports medicine and help the city get some money to hopefully attract additional sports medicine firms and clinics to come here, put on a trade show or conference, and help that state money with some local seed money. So that $50,000 that you asked for is in the final 2018 budget. That's great. You have been taking on a disproportionate burden with this whole issue of PFAS, you know, the chemicals that you found in your water supply and where Issaquah as a community, I think, you know, exhibit A of how to do this stuff right, discovering it, spending well over a million dollars to get the chemicals out of the water supply, but the whole notion of getting maybe a more sustainable cleanup program in place and piloting something where we don't have to keep doing one-offs. We had asked for $200,000 in the budget, and there is $206,000 in the final 2018 capital budget. And lastly, we wanted to get a little bit of money to help pay for the programmatic EIS work, or, sorry, I'm getting into government jargon, environmental impact statement work at Lake Simamish State Park. And we asked for about $100,000 for that, and we also combined with the Friends Group that was looking for $100,000 for master plan work for the park. And so in the final capital budget, there is $200,000 for Lake Simamish State Park. So you think about it, in the span of a few months, that's another, over $5.5 million going to Lake Simamish State Park, which is really gratifying. And I'd like to say that these things happened all because of us, but I think it's always important to remember that we do these things and we promote these things, but the legislators have to take the votes and ask for things in the budget. And you had some great help, and I think on both sides of the aisle. I think Senator Mullet has really made this whole renovating and modernizing of Lake Simamish State Parks a personal cause of his, and Senator Lisa Wellman, another one of your members, really took the PFAS issue to heart. Representative Graves has been a great supporter of yours on Confluence Park and Lake Simamish State Park. So those things don't just happen through happenstance. I mean, they're intentional, conscious work by the legislators themselves. Then to go over a few things where there are issues of importance for us and other local governments that came out well. I had mentioned early on affordable housing and homelessness. The legislature passed a landmark bill on the document recording fee. House Bill 1570 is adding $22 to the document recording fee surcharge and making all of the additional fees permanent with money that will go into dealing with homelessness prevention. For King County, this House Bill 1570 is going to mean over $15 million a year. So that's a significant amount of new money going to fight homelessness. There was also $106.7 million in the two-year capital budget for the Housing Trust Fund, a significant amount of money for that program. And there was several hundred million dollars for mental health, behavioral health efforts through both the operating and capital budget. One of the other things that we had joined with a number of other cities in asking for, we wanted the legislature to put some additional money into the Basic Law Enforcement Academy. That's run by the Criminal Justice Training Commission. It's centered in Burien, and it is where any newly hired police officer must go to get trained before he or she can be out on the street. So there's been a big backlog in getting folks through the academy for training, and we had hoped to get two additional classes in the 2018 supplemental operating budget. The legislature ended up doing one. However, in the last couple of years, the legislature has taken what had been a base of 10 classes up to 17 now. So that's, that's pretty important. Each class holds about 30 people, so there's now slots for an additional 210 folks going through the academy. So that's very important and something that had been on our list. There's also a bill that I had flagged for our folks in police that we were very supportive on. It establishes a new grant program for mental health field response. And by that, I mean that it's the notion of law enforcement agencies being joined with mental health professionals to help people who probably need treatment and services more than they need incarceration. And so House Bill 2892 gives the Washington Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs $1 million to do a grant program to provide at least eight grants around the state to law enforcement agencies that want to team up with mental health professionals and social workers to help people on the ground. I mentioned the body camera legislation that was Senate Bill 6408. And then in the whole area of, you know, your local revenue base, one of the things we always go into a legislative session looking for is we always want to make sure we're preserving the revenues that funnel down to local governments, and that's things like the municipal criminal justice assistance account, liquor revenues, the marijuana revenue distributions. And so, you know, I'm happy to report there was nothing that took money away or diverted it or froze any of your local revenues. And there was also a very good result on the marijuana revenue distributions in particular. And again, I'll call out, you know, a member of the local delegation, Representative Ton Asen really worked hard on this particular issue. We were not sure after the 2017 session if a $12 million allocation in 2017 actually would go up to $30 million, because that had been part of the deal when we started the combined retail and medical marijuana system, that there would be that level of sharing with cities and counties. And indeed, the $30 million is what was in the supplemental budget for the rest of 2017-19, and the $30 million will be in the budget for 2019-21. So that's a very good result, and I think on the finance side, probably by about mid-year, you should start seeing some additional revenues from that. I want to caution, $30 million sounds like a lot, but remember, that's a distribution to cities and counties throughout the state that have marijuana facilities under the legalized system. So if you're hosting retail outlets or production or processing facilities, you are entitled to a share of that money under a formula. So it will be helpful to us. I don't want you to think it's going to be Nirvana on the budget side, but more in the every little bit helps category. And then something I'll mention that we had a lot of worries about going into session, there had been a big fight in the 2017 session over the deployment of new small cell network technology, and those in the telecommunications industry, I think, were very excited about deploying that to the point that they thought local right-of-way authority and local permitting should be overrun, and we respectfully disagreed with that. And so there was no bill passed in 2017. There was a vigorous debate again in 2018, and again, no bill passed. So sometimes in the world of Olympia, no action can be a very good action, and in this case, I think that's true for all of you. So I'm going to stop there. That's sort of a high-clip summary. I don't want to take all of your time. You've got a busy meeting and a lot of people here, but I think it was a session that worked out very well for you, and I'm really pleased that some of the things that the city highlighted in the budget process came to fruition, and that's always nice to see, and again, through a lot of help from your legislative delegation.
Thank you, Doug. Stay up here with me.
Okay.
So tonight is Doug's last report out to our city council. He has been our lobbyist for six years, and I would like to read about some of the accomplishments that we, as a team, have been able to make over the last six years and give Doug a certificate of appreciation. This certificate of appreciation is hereby awarded to Doug Levy, pronounced it correctly, sorry for the mis-sense before, in recognition of his outstanding service to the city of Issaquah as our lobbyist from July 2012 through April 2018. Doug was instrumental in advancing the city's goals, defeating potentially harmful bills, advocating for legislation that could help us, and in bringing together like-minded entities to collaborate for the common good. Those efforts helped us to preserve programs, keep local revenue sources, protect the environment, and ensure quality public services. You saw an example of that tonight in what Doug has helped us to accomplish in just this session. We don't have enough time to go through all the projects and issues Doug had influence on through his work with our state legislature, but I do want to highlight some of the biggest successes and gains Issaquah has seen from his work on our behalf. In the area of transportation, Doug helped us secure a $5 million grant from the Department of Commerce for Southeast 62nd Street, which is that portion off of East Lake Simamish Parkway that will connect to Costco. A $1.5 million grant from the Department of Commerce for the intersection of 12th Avenue and State Route 900 near the former Tully's location. Auxiliary lanes on I-90, a project that we're going to be talking about. I'm going to mention it in my mayor's report tonight, very exciting project that's coming our way shortly. The improvements to East Lake Simamish Parkway, support for the Front Street Interstate 90 interchange justification report, and improvements to the Highway 18 and I-90 interchange, probably one of the most important projects that Issaquah can hope to accomplish in helping us with our congestion in town. Other projects included, as Doug mentioned tonight, a $206,000 grant for the PFAS remediation study with the Department of Ecology, partnership on the Costco expansion plans, support for our salmon hatchery, and receiving our sports medicine innovative partnership zone designation. Doug was also quite prolific in the area of parks, recreation, and the great outdoors. Some of the noteworthy park projects he assisted with are Central Park, PAD 1 state funding that helped complete a new synthetic turf field that opened earlier this year, funding for a number of recent improvements at Lake Simamish State Park, as well as the support for the master plan update and environmental impact statement process that just kicked off. And again, Doug covered some of those big wins in his session summary tonight. Last but certainly not least, from 2013 through 2016, he was influential in helping us receive state funding to complete both Phase 1 and Phase 2 of Confluence Park. We know there was a lot of time and effort spent on this endeavor, and so we would also like to close by giving Doug a gift, a picture of the part, the bridge in our, in our park as a small token of our appreciation.
That's awesome.
Thank you so much, Doug. We hope that when Doug looks at this picture, he'll always remember us and be reminded of how grateful we are for the work that he has done for the city and all of the residents of Issaquah. Thank you for your dedication to the city of Issaquah. We wish you so much success in your future endeavors. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'd like to call a five-minute recess now so our council members may be able to come down and say goodnight to Doug, goodbye to Doug, because he's not staying for our whole meeting tonight. We're in recess for the next five minutes. Thank you.
That's our six-year.[1567.13]
So we are back from recess, and we're going to move into audience comments. We have about 10 folks signed up this evening, so audience comments will be limited to three minutes. If you've come with a group, and I can see some signs and badges, so I know there are some groups here. If you have a spokesperson, that's great. Please feel free to raise your hand while they're speaking to show support for whoever is speaking. So audience comments. Audience members may address the council at this time. The guidelines for this are on the meeting agenda. Those who signed up on our sign-up list will be called forward first. And if you did not sign up, at the end of us getting through the list, I will ask if there is anyone else that would like to speak. When you come up, please come up to the lectern and speak into the microphone, state your name, address, and relationship to the city. And if you've brought written comments, please bring them up to the clerk afterwards. There is also a public hearing tonight regarding the first major amendment to the Costco Development Agreement. If you would like to make comments on this topic, you will have an opportunity later in the meeting. Thank you for taking the time to address our meeting this evening. And can you read the first and signed-up? Tisha?
Yes, Geraldine Carey.
My name is Geraldine Carey. My address is 955 17th Avenue, Northwest Issaquah. I've been a resident of Issaquah for 40 years, and I'm proud of it, but I'd like to leave because it's getting too crowded, but I won't. I love the city. I was driving down to this meeting tonight, and I noticed there are traffic counters on the Newport Way between, well, I guess it's Target and the, going up the hill to, from downtown Issaquah. And I'm concerned because the people who live on Newport Way, I was on a committee appointed by Rowan Hines when he was mayor, and that's a long time ago. We talked about widening Newport Way, and the consensus with the majority of residents who lived in Issaquah was that if you make Newport Way three or four lanes with a turn-center lane, the people who live on Newport Way will never be able to get out of the residential driveway because traffic will be going the speed limit and never allow residents to exit their properties. So I don't know what you have planned for that road, but I know as a longtime resident, when you live on Newport Way and your access on Newport Way is impacted by traffic flow with one lane in each direction, it's hard to get out of. You need turning traffic that blocks traffic going in each direction so that you can enter and exit from your private residences. So I would caution you, when you try to move traffic through Issaquah, you need to be aware of that. The people who live within the city need an access point to get to their properties. So I would say, you know, be careful. And if you need more roads, the more roads you put in, the, they're not going anywhere because there's nothing improved between Seattle and Issaquah. There are no new exits, there are no widening of roads. You're just going to jam up the city of Issaquah's roads with two-lane traffics in any direction within the city limits. So until they widen the roads into Seattle, or Bellevue, or wherever, it doesn't do any good to put more roads within the city limits. Thank you.
Thank you, Geraldine. Rebecca Rice?
My name is Rebecca Rice. My address is 10603 Second Place Southwest, Seattle, 98146. And I'm here on behalf of The Garage, the Issaquah Teen Cafe. I've worked in Issaquah for five and a half years as the social services manager at the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank. And in my work there, I work with a lot of our low-income families here in Issaquah, and I know that for them and their children, a big need is to have a safe place for them to go after school in the evenings and access services. And of course, The Garage will be a place for all teens in our community, but I think it will have an outsized effect for our low-income families. And I know that the city council and the city staff have been huge supporters of The Garage for the past two years and going forward, so I also wanted to say thank you for that support.
Thank you very much. M. Haynes?
Hello, my name is M. I live at 761 Mountain View Place Southwest, and I'm a student at Gibson High School, and I'm also speaking on behalf of the Issaquah Teen Cafe. The Teen Cafe will be an amazing opportunity for high school students all over Issaquah. It will be a place where students can decompress, make new friends, as well as a place where they can get immediate access to counseling services or homework help. We've been able to come this far thanks to the members of the Issaquah community who have volunteered their time to the Teen Cafe Steering Committee. And by voting to authorize our lease today, you too will be part of creating a support network for teens all over the Issaquah school district. Thank you.
Thank you, M. Angelene Yu?
My name is Angelene Yu, and I am a freshman at Skyline High School residing at 3541 254th Avenue, Southeast Issaquah. My passion for Teen Cafe began as I want to help kickstart the future of the teens of Issaquah by creating a safe place to make memories of a lifetime. By voting to sign our lease, you will be benefiting generations of Issaquah teens to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Angelene. Stephen Colbert?
Is it okay if I borrow time from all those short speeches?
No.
All right. So my name is Stephen Colbert. I live at 5710 143rd Place, Southeast in Bellevue. The city of Issaquah is a great city for many reasons, but perhaps its most outstanding feature is the fact that it is set in the beautiful forested amphitheater of the Issaquah Alps. The precipice is the very steep forested northeast corner of Cougar Mountain. It is plainly visible from Issaquah and I-90 and contains some of the most beautiful old forests in the Issaquah Alps. The Burisma property is located at the east end of the precipice. It is the only parcel on the precipice that has any land flat enough for development. The reason why this property remains one of the last undeveloped parcels is that it has no easy access. There are many reasons why this development should not occur, including increased traffic, potentially a dangerous intersection on Newport Way, loss of wild habitat, and loss of the skid road trail, which happens to be the easiest and most family-friendly way to get from Newport Way up to the precipice. I would however like to focus on the most offensive feature of this development, which is the access road. The current proposal for the Burisma development involves putting in an access road across the very steep terrain that extends from Newport Way up to the development area, which is a vertical height of about 150 feet. I'll refer to the steep slope as the Burisma precipice. The Burisma precipice has a grade of greater than 40%. This is steep or steeper than most double diamond ski runs. Building this road at the required 12% grade would require clearcutting a large portion of the precipice and extensive grading. The grading is estimated to require moving 83,000 cubic yards of earth, which is equivalent to 8,000 industrial-sized dump trucks full of dirt, just kind of almost mind-boggling to think of. The area to be graded would extend along Newport Way for 1,200 feet, and the top-to-bottom regrade along the Burisma precipice in the most heavily disturbed section would be 700 feet wide at the base and 400 feet wide at the top of the hill. And the top of the hill will have to be lowered 12 feet to accommodate the road grade. The grading will have a very unnatural stair-step-like pattern, like one would expect to see in an open pit mine. The scar created will never blend in with the wild and natural surroundings. I'm asking the city of Issaquah to make funds available to purchase the property and protect it from development. I'll have time to show just two more slides.
You actually can talk until the light turns red, so you've got some more time.
So this is, the previous view is from I-90, from the bicycle bridge that goes over I-90. This is actually from SR 900 right near I-90, and the main part of this picture is the Burisma property, up to the top of that ridge in front of where the clouds are. And pretty much, everything from about here to here will be cleared and regraded.
Oh, I'm sorry, Stephen, you have to talk at the microphone, or they won't be able to hear you.
Yes, so most, almost everything you see in that, in that green section would be cleared and graded. This is the view from Newport Way. As you can see, this, some of the trees in here are very old, at least.
Microphone.
At least, at least 100-year-old trees, and sometimes even more than 100 years old, a lot of the trees in this area. This is the view from inside of the Burisma precipice, at what I call ground zero, the area that we maximally graded.
If you can summarize, Stephen, that would be great.
Sure, I just want to show one last picture, and that's it. This is the, from the Burisma plan showing the grading, is the stair-step-type pattern that steeply goes up to the top of the hill. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments today. And there are several members in the audience with signs and waving their hands to show support. I would ask you refrain from applause, though. It is a business meeting, and it's kind of distracting. So if you do support him, please just look at the council, raise your hand, and they'll know that you are moved by their words. Thank you. Kaylee Jake?
Hi, my name is Kaylee Jake, and I'm the director of The Garage. I live at 24706 Southeast 30th Street. And I won't be presenting today with Jeff, so I just wanted to take a few minutes and share with the whole council and the mayor what I was able to share with the Services and Safety Committee last week, in that this month, we've been working on this project for three years. And Barb D. Michelle and I started this together, and I am just really overwhelmed with the support that we've had, not only from the council and both mayors that I've had the pleasure of working with, but the staff has just been incredible. And it's all about our students. It's all about our youth. And I know that you all care so deeply, just as we do. And so I just really wanted to thank you mostly, and for all of that, and for giving our students a voice. And I think when we turn on the news every day, giving them a voice is becoming more and more important. And so I appreciate that. And I also want to appreciate you in allowing us to provide them the resources that they need. I wanted to let you know that we've recently received funding for a mental health counselor to be on-site for the next two years, so that's pretty exciting. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Kaylee. Sarah Crofton?
Hello, my name is Sarah Crofton. I live at 32778 Southeast 86th Street in Snoqualmie. I've been in the Issaquah area since 2013. I had the opportunity to meet with Bob Larson at Starbucks a few days ago, and he shared with me the plans to build a school above the hospital. And I had several concerns about that. One would just be the building site. He'd said that they were going to clear the top of that, which seems like it could cause potential for landslides. It's also very steep on the other side, so I'm not sure how small children would be kept, rallied in, and safe. Also be just the access. The hospital is right below there, which is a world-class hospital, and we're really fortunate to have that in our area. But there's only one lane going up to the school. They just built more residential in that area. And so if you were someone that needed to get to the ER, it would be difficult to get there during school drop-off times or pickup times. I mentioned traffic would be quite backed up. I would be concerned about emergency vehicles being on the access if schools were doing pickup and drop-off times, but it would be even more concerning if you were someone that had to drive someone that had a life-threatening anything when minutes matter, and all you want is for traffic to move, and you have no way of making that happen. So I'm sure that you've carefully considered a lot of things, but I hope that those have all been taken into consideration as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Sarah. And Bob is in the back with his hand in the air. Peter Crofton?
My name is Peter Crofton. I live here in Issaquah, 1823 Northeast Kenyon Court. And I'm just going to piggyback off what Sarah was saying. I've been up there, and it's just, it's real congested. And it's no matter, no matter how high, if you guys build the school up, it's just too congested, there's not enough room for anything, and just a lot of safety issues with, you know, especially if you've got young kids walking around, and congestion, you know, in the morning, coming up the hill and coming, I think it's down Black Nugget, and just, there are things, just being backed up right there, turning into where you go, you know, you go to the hospital. So, yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Peter. Lisa Callen?
Hello, I am Lisa Callen, and I am a resident of Issaquah. I live at 3153 Northeast Marquette Way. And I'm here just to thank the city and the council for considering The Garage and the rental and that agenda item. And just, in my work with youth and my work in public service, this, watch this grassroots effort unfold has been amazing. So you have the perfect ingredients, you have the grassroots effort, you have the organization, you have representation from the children and the youth that will be served, you have representation at the meetings that I've attended from law enforcement, you've had it from Parks and Rec, you've had it from youth advocates and community members, and you have all of that going into place. And then you had a very strong process where everybody involved really dove deep to try to understand how to be successful. They developed a plan, and then from that plan came all of this other energy and effort to just talk about program, to engage the community on their concerns, and then the city and the staff and those engagements. When you have all of that come together, you have these perfect ingredients to create this long-term, sustainable change that's going to impact our youth for generations to come. And it's just really super exciting to see all of that and to be a part of that. And so thank you for that, and I just want to make sure I lend my voice to your vote and hope you continue that support. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Robert Swanson?
Hello, my name is Robert Swanson, 826 Fourth Avenue, Northeast Issaquah. There's the mouse. So, oh boy, there it is. When I came home today, it was raining like cats and dogs. I don't know if you know this, but this month is the most rainiest so far. By the way, this is the hill that everybody wants cut down. This is the area that roped off, you can kind of see the peak, and it goes blue and goes around. These are the trees, the hill that they want to cut down right here. This was this afternoon, I don't know, 5 o'clock, 5:15, you can hear the rain just coming down, and it's right above me, but you know what? Very little rain was hitting me. You know why? You can see a few drops coming down, just because the trees are there to protect the hill. I mean, who would have thunk? But you can see some water that was there because there's no trees right above that. But this is what it's all about, and we're supposed to be the, the city of trees? Well, let's not cut down the trees. Let's keep the trees there, let's keep the hill there. That would be a wonderful thing. They want to put the school there and put a road around it, now I found out. So they gave the, how much the school's going to be, but now they added in the road. So now that's even more trees coming down, and it's even closer to the, to the edge. So, sorry about the filming, I was walking and trying not to trip while I was walking around, but anyway. So I just want every, I don't know if you've all had a chance to go up there. I appreciate the mayor, I know she's gone up there and she's looked around, and she actually gave me the idea to go look around at the different tapes, and there's sticks in the ground and so forth. But if you're going to vote on this, I think you should go take a look. Anyway, I know that's, I don't know how long it goes, but I want to go, I only got a couple more minutes left, I'm sure. Okay. We're Tree City. The trees keep the water from getting into the hill, the roots suck it on up so that it doesn't get into the hill. And trees, yes, they do. If you want to go look at global warming, whatever you want to call it, climate change, it started in the 50s when we started just clearcutting everything, and then we started building roads, and then blacktops. You put, you cut down trees, it does cause there to be warming. Hold on, trees drink water, they love water. Sarah, thank you for, appreciate you too sharing. I just met them, there's some other-- Sarah, thank you for, appreciate you too sharing, I just met them, there's some other things that I've been talking to the community about, and I happened to meet them at Starbucks. We had a great talk for like, 45 minutes, and, you know, they saw that, they just went up there and they go, wow, that's, that's weird. Anybody I've ever met has looked at the hill and they go, that's really weird, why would they want to put a school there? But, actually, that's not true. There's one person in my neighborhood that, she works for the school district, so she wants, she wants the tree, the school there. I met a mother and a father, actually a father and a daughter, they moved to the apartments right next to the hospital. The reason why is the father has heart attacks and so forth.
A few seconds to wrap up.
Yeah, they need, he needs to get to the hospital quickly. So he, they lived in Fall City, and they had to get there quickly. You, you put a bunch of traffic there, and yes, there truly are lives in, in danger if that you, if people can't get themselves to the hospital. It really is, I, it's the case, there are proven people there. I will try to get them to come up here next time and so they can speak, because I just met them two days ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Linda Shepherd?
Hands in the air.
My name is Linda Shepherd, I live at 14985 256th Avenue Southeast Issaquah. I'm an unincorporated Issaquah and resident there. So my comments have to do with the Burgsma windward property development, and I think it's really appropriate that, hearing about the Earth Day proclamation. So in lieu of that Earth Day proclamation, and the identity of Issaquah as a tree city, I am totally appalled that we're even considering 22 acres of trees and two wetlands being sacrificed for a mere 57 houses. Providing more housing, which is the development, developer's rationale, is a lame rationale. This development serves very few elite people who can afford housing over $1 million. It's not the best use of the land, and leaves the city of Issaquah vulnerable to landslides and a lot of other things that other people have talked about. The proposed Burgsma windward project is technically difficult, risky, and contentious. It goes against the city's policy goals of maintaining a forested character on hillsides, protecting and preserving the existing tree canopy. This policy recommends the use of off-site transfer development rights as a mean to, means to achieve that end. With only a steep winding access road across the 40% landslide-prone slopes, it would be hazardous in snow and icy conditions. I live in Miramott, and we have a similar problem. We have a windy road that goes up, and people cannot get up it, or down it, when it snows. On Christmas Eve this year, both at a friend's house on Pine Cone Drive and in my own neighborhood, there were cars blocking the road. People couldn't get up. Cars were in ditches, cars were in the middle of the road. So this is something I haven't heard anybody else mention before. It also would be a difficult access for emergency vehicles such as fire engines and ambulance, and that also doesn't fit within the goals of our community. The estimated 84,000, I've also heard 83,000 cubic yards of dirt excavated from the hillside and trucked to some unknown site would exacerbate already congested traffic, not only in Issaquah but in surrounding communities that are already experiencing massive traffic congestion along the Issaquah-Hobart and May Valley Roads.
If you can sum up, Linda, that would be great.
Community support to save Cougar Mountain is growing. Please support the acquisition of the Burgsma Windward Cougar Mountain Hillside property by the City of Issaquah in cooperation with King County and regional finance, financial partners. Taking leadership now will preserve a gateway to Cougar Mountain Trails from the Issaquah Transit Center.
Thank you, Linda. Lots of hands in the air, lots of signs waving. Is there, do we have anybody else signed up?
No.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? See Elizabeth's hand in the air.
Elizabeth Mopin, 100 Big Bear Place Northwest Issaquah, Washington. I want to echo what has been said about the importance of the trees. I would love to see the Burgsma property saved. I'd also like to see us save the trees that are on the Providence Heights property. There's more there than just trees, as you know. We've heard tonight that there is more funding now for housing and homelessness. If it happens that the property at Providence Heights stays standing long enough for a buyer to come along and put in a project there that would provide social services access and affordable housing and training for women, I hope the city will find it in their heart to support that. And I hope whatever happens, that we will have learned something about permitting demolitions of things that are really treasures to the city. I know there was something else on my mind, but, oh yes, the teen center, lovely idea. It would be good, because this is part of the human services extension of the city, to have, as Mary Lynch has asked for, some background on exactly how much that will cost, so we can kind of balance it. And if you have more property available, we still need a day center someplace in Issaquah. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Hands of support. Mary?
Yeah. I sent you an email, in case you hadn't. My name is Mary Lynch, and I reside at 2690 Northcrest, Oakcrest Drive, Northwest Oakcrest Drive, Issaquah, Washington. I first want to say that, for those of you that have not watched the Development Commission meeting, where the lights at the Issaquah Middle were reviewed, for those of, half a dozen of us that stayed until 11 o'clock that night to make our public comment, I would go to the web, city website and look at that. City staff said that they really hadn't heard any complaints about the lights at the ball field. Well, that's because we didn't know that the lights were going in at the ball field. And if you haven't paid attention, those lights right now are red-tagged, because there is no permit for those lights, but they were installed mechanically, electrically, and large poles of those lights are already installed on the field without a permit from the city. So the school district asked us to trust them. If you look at the, all the summary of the Issaquah Middle, never once were lights mentioned. In the staff review of the project, staff actually said if they were to consider that, that would have major impact to the citizens. But there was never any mitigation, it was never discussed in open meeting, except there was concern from the neighbors about the impact of the school, but there was very, very little mitigation that was done. So now, after the fact, and I want to thank the Development Commission to sending it back to staff and saying, we need more information. And hopefully, this will happen, you know, going forward when these types of things happen, because a public entity should not be going ahead with construction without an operating permit. That is just unconscionable. The other thing I would like to ask is, I do, and in my letter that I sent you, I do support the teen center. It's the process that I have concerns with. And the immediate process and the re-looking at the other new places that Jeff and Parks did, I think is good. But let's step back. Where and how do we decide how our public property is used? How do we value that public property? And in arguing a little bit, well, it's going to be free rent. Well, it's not free rent, it's costing us as taxpayers. If we were to rent out that building to another entity, a commercial entity, we would be receiving rent for it. So there is a cost. Now, we may be doing it for free, but we need going forward to have transparency in the process on how we select, who gets to use our, our public process, or our public property. And we also need to identify the cost and the contribution of our taxpayers' dollars that are going to this. Because my fear is, in four years to five years, are we going to need a new Parks? Or, you know, new, and I already heard, a new staff building. And where are we going to get that money? Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Some hands of support. Are there, is there anyone else in the audience this evening who would like to address council? I see three, four hands. We'll start with Skip, Julie, Dave, Dave, and who was the fourth one? Thank you. Okay.
Good evening, David Kapler, 255 Southeast Andrews Street. I want to make a correction to some of the things said tonight. It talked about restoration project and trail project in Lake Mammoth State Park. It's not going to be in the state park, it's going to be on city land, the Greenwood Trust property. And I think about that, how important that land is to all of us, to the state. It's city property that we bought a long time ago, it was very expensive, it was threatened at that time when wetlands were pretty much ignored, with a big condominium project, the city, with I'm sure state and county money, purchased that, it's still city park property. We are looking at how, with our money we are spending on the park plan for Lake Mammoth State Park, we're going to look at how that park land will blend in and be a benefit to the state park, and the state park will benefit that land. So that was a great purchase in the past, we got another one to do soon. Thank you.
Thank you, David. It's in the air. Julie, do you want to come up?
Good evening, my name is Julie Clark, I live at 915 Bear Ridge Court Northwest in Issaquah. And I would like to raise my hand, actually both of them, to show support for the proclamation made by Mayor Polly. Global residents from as far away as Nepal have reached out to offer support to the Save Cougar Mountain initiative. We have heard, here in these council chambers, from a physician who talked about the necessity of forested lands to support the health of nearby residents. We have also heard from a representative of the Eastside Autobahn about the necessity of the forested hillsides to support a wide variety of birds that use the trees for nesting and use the area from the treetops to the forest floor for food, mating, and migration. Our local community, communities are working to protect and preserve our natural resources and preserve wildlife habitat. We encourage the city of Issaquah to make environmentally sound decisions regarding our hillsides and provide open space, a forested hillside for the residents of Issaquah and neighboring, neighbor, and neighboring cities, within a quarter of a mile from the Issaquah Transit Center, eliminating the need for driving to a trailhead. By acquiring the 46-acre property, Issaquah can offer all residents a healthier place to live, play, and learn while having a great open space to visit. This is how we, here in the city of Issaquah, can be regional leaders. Not just one day of the year, but every day. Saving the Burgsma Windward 46-acre property on Cougar Mountain is a significant way the city of Issaquah can show that their Earth Day proclamation is translated into meaningful action. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Lots of hands in the air. Skip, would you like to come up?
Skip Rowley, my office is at 1595 Northwest Gilman. And I want to throw my two bits in on the Doug Levy situation. We worked with Doug and found him to be as straight-talking, good person that you could ever possibly have representing the city of Issaquah. He always did what he said he was going to do, and I think most of you know, we have a lobbyist that works for us down there, and side by side, they were able to really work together. And now, unfortunately, it's time to replace Doug. So I am standing here, hoping that you people will react to that and do it relatively soon, but use Doug in the process. He knows everybody down there, he knows the rituals, he knows the chairs of all the committees, he knows all the players. So even though he might not be on your payroll anymore, it would certainly be great to include him, with his recommendations. So that's pretty much what I wanted to say, other than, let's get this Teen Cafe built. I'm all supportive of its location, these folks have been working for two or three years to get it to the point where it is now. They've been working with the Parks staff and others on this, and so hopefully you will sign the lease tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Skip. And lots of hands. I did see one more member who'd like to talk to us this evening?
My name's Selena Eon, I live at 635 Calmia Place Northwest, up in the woods. Part of why we chose to move to Issaquah was because I had read the Issaquah Comprehensive Plan, and I had this idea that this was actually a city that had the same ideals that I do. I'm a naturopathic physician, and I'm also an avid hiker and trail runner. I've logged probably almost 1,000 miles in the Issaquah Alps just last year. So I know my way around the mountains very well, and it's my favorite form of medicine. One thing that I had always imagined is that somehow we would develop a way for the citizens to make our way around city without as many cars as we need now. And I feel like using the Burgsma property would be a great way to let the people of Talis make their way to the Transit Center more efficiently. I was actually surprised that that hasn't been considered as a major part of a possibility there. Another thing that really concerns me is that I'm a fan of the weather. I actually took a class from Cliff Mas, the meteorologist from UW a few years ago. And I've noticed that in Cliff Mas's blog lately, he's been discussing the increased landslide risks, also how we're likely to continue having more rain in the future than we do now. And he's of the opinion that we need communities to stop building on steep hillsides in general because of landslide risks. I know my home has dirt that's basically as hard as you could imagine, it's clay. Clay soaks up water until it goes. And we had a major landslide just recently out in North Bend on the Middle Fork Trail that's wiped out the trail, similar land there to the forest we have here, except that it's not even a particularly steep area. And I'm concerned that when we have these studies done that say, oh, it's not a particular risk of landslides, that we're using old science that's not based on what's going to happen with the climate this year, next year, or in 10 years. I feel like that's really critical to consider, since these are going to be homes that people will live in. I'm going to stay here, my kids have, are grown up and moved out, but many other people have families here, and we can't make homes in places that are dangerous for them using outdated science. I want to make sure that everyone here at least has considered that that is a possibility. Don't just look at those studies that are based on old weather and meteorological data and assume that it's going to hold true 10 years from now. Thank you.
Thank you, Selena. All, all the hands are in the air, and thank you for reading our comprehensive plan. Pretty impressive. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council this evening? I'll ask her second time, anyone else who would like to address this evening during audience comments, and the last time? I'd like to thank you all for coming. We have a really big audience tonight, and we've been getting large audiences, because I think there are some issues that are really compelling. We heard tonight about the importance of having a lobbyist, about the Newport Way improvement projects, and concerns that residents may have about abilities to access those properties. We got a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot of speakers about the garage at Teen Cafe. We thank you to the council and the staff for their support. We also heard from a lot of speakers about the Burgsma windward development, requesting the city to find funds to purchase the property and to take consideration into preservation of the trees. We heard about school siting concerns, and encouraging council to think about tree preservation during that as well. We did have a speaker talk about Providence Heights Project, the Issaquah Middle School Light Proposal, and a restoration project on Greenwood Park. So thank you all for coming in this evening. The council really values your time, and... The council really values your time and the fact that you've come to provide comments. Much appreciated. We will now start with committee and regional reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The YRAT8 Management Committee meeting will take place on May 1st in Seattle, and I will attend. The agenda is not yet set, and this concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. The Services and Safety Committee met on April 10th, and key actions taken. The committee received a presentation from City Administrator Moon related to broadcasting board and commission meetings. There were a number of individuals that spoke in support of additional meetings during public comment. The committee has directed the administration to include the Parks Board and the Transportation Advisory Committee when it is formed in the list of meetings that will be broadcast. And we also left open the possibility of additional meetings, court, boards, and commission meetings in the future. We also heard Agenda Bill 7484, the Teen Cafe partnership and lease agreement. Public comment was wildly in favor of Teen Cafe and the proposed location. Agenda Bill 7484 is on the agenda this evening. It was reported out of committee with a recommendation to approve. The committee also continued its review of Agenda Bill 7522, creating the Visit Issaquah Organization. Staff presented responses to the committee's questions from the March 13th meeting. Public comment was supportive, and we are moving forward with the, supportive of moving forward with the creation of a destination marketing organization for Issaquah. Agenda Bill 7522 was reported out of committee with a recommendation to authorize the mayor to prepare and file articles in incorporation creating an Issaquah Destination Marketing Organization, Visit Issaquah as a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit organization. The committee has asked staff to return to Services and Safety when the Destination Marketing Organization draft bylaws have been created for review and approval. This is important. The next Services and Safety Committee will not be held in our regular scheduled time. The next meeting will be on Wednesday, May 9th, at 6:30 here in council chambers. Eastside Fire and Rescue Board met on April 12th. I attended the meeting along with Councilmember Goodman. It's timely. We had the conversation about PFAS. We got an update from PFAS from the chief, and talking about the partnership between Eastside Fire and Rescue, the city of Issaquah, and the State of Washington Department of Ecology to address the problem. Finally, the board approved a memorandum of understanding with the city of Issaquah for Station 72 and future Eastside Fire and Rescue facilities. The MOU outlines the agreement pertaining to facilities at Fire Station 72, and the expectation of how the agreement will facilitate, for future facilities will be addressed. The next Eastside Fire and Rescue Board meeting will be on May 10th. Council Goodman and I have permission to participate in that meeting via phone so that we can participate in the council senior leadership team retreat. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. Councilmember Ramos.
Thank you, Mayor. The city, Council Infrastructure Committee met on April 11th last week, and AB 7535, the amendments to the Issaquah Municipal Code regarding small cell design guidelines was discussed. We will be bringing it to council at next meeting on the 7th of May, so we'll talk about that then. And I, new item brought up was the updated water system plan, excuse me. That's going to be in committee for a while. That's a long process. We'll be working on that. That's a legal requirement, and we'll be working on that till probably November or so. The Goodman Boulevard project update, we got an update on that. That's a project we authorized a while back to look at all of Goodman Boulevard and get all the information we have so we can look at long-term how we're going to design that through road. And then I want to bring your attention to a number of items that are actually on consent calendar tonight. They were there, and they were brought to us. They hadn't gone quite through the full process, but they were brought to Infrastructure Committee. There are four items regarding grants. So one was all on Newport Way, both sections of it. So one was AB 7591, which is authorizing submittal for grant for a Maple Sunset stretch, the stretch of Maple Sunset on Newport Way. And then on SR 900 to 54th Stretch, there was two requests for two authorizations to submit for grants again, and one acceptance of a grant. So these, you know, grants come and go. We talked about that. This is, these are projects that we're moving along with, and we had requested the city staff to, as much as possible, look for other people's money to help with this. So they have been doing that. Those things come with tighter timelines when you, when you have, when they get notified by a grant and trying to apply for that. And then we get it and authorize reception of it. So it's on the consent calendar tonight. If there are any questions, you can ask, but I think that's pretty much where we're moving all ahead. I just want to highlight those because they're not quite in the normal process. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Ramos. Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My only report this evening is on the Growth Management Policy Board. We met last Thursday, April 5th, in Seattle, and the bulk of the meeting was spent on discussing the scope of the update to the Vision 2040 document. And our, our Director of Development Services had sent a letter in representing the city on some of our desired issues to be addressed during the vision update. And I brought one of those up during our discussion, and I have summarized this in an email to, to, to the mayor and council president about, one of our desires in Issaquah is for kind of the future vision for the region to incorporate accounting for kind of existing deficits. At least if you're going to plan for some improvements to, and ways to manage growth in the future, that those plans address the existing issues on the ground, as well as not just accounting for the incremental growth that comes. We're going to have a challenge getting the vision to, to accept that way of thinking, but I like a challenge like that. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Winterstein. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. Land and Shore Committee will meet this Thursday, April 19th, here in council chambers at 6:30. It is not our regular night. We typically meet the first Thursday of each month. On the agenda that night, the moratorium update, as we have had since the moratorium started. Agenda Bill 7533, first major amendment to the Costco Development Agreement. It is on our agenda tonight, and if the council desires to refer that item to Land and Shore, then that will be on the agenda for Thursday. Agenda Bill 7507 pertains to the Moratorium Central Issaquah Standards Regarding Inclusionary Zoning. Agenda Bill 7577, Central Issaquah Development and Design Standards Amendment Limiting New Hotels, Motels, Timeshare Lodging, Comfort Centers, and Self-Storage Units in Specific Zones Within Central Issaquah. This does not pertain to the moratorium, even though it pertains to Central Issaquah. Agenda Bill 7344, the Visioning Regarding Central Issaquah Plan, that is the second and last item to be dealt with under the moratorium. And Agenda Bill 7576, Amendments to the Issaquah Municipal Code Regarding Accessory Dwelling Units, that's the jam-packed agenda. I cannot be there on Thursday, so Councilmember Hunt is filling in for me, and Council President Mertz will chair in my absence, so thanks to both of you. And that's my report.
Thanks, Councilmember Goodman. Council, Deputy Council President Patisse?
Thank you, Madam, Madam Mayor. Just one announcement. The PSRC Economic Development District Board will be meeting Wednesday, May 2nd, in Seattle, and so I'll be reporting back after that meeting. That concludes my report.
Thanks. Council President Mertz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee met on Wednesday, April 11th, pardon me, in Renton City Hall. Our pre-PIC discussion, we had a presentation from staff from one table on strategies to address the root cause of homelessness. And then in the main PIC meeting, there was no discussion of proposed actions. So that concludes my report on PIC. King County Growth Management Policy Council next meets on Wednesday, May 30th, at 4:00 PM in PSRC chambers, and the agenda is still TBD. This concludes my report.
Thank you. For the mayor's report this evening, I have a number of items to report on. First, there will be an executive session held this evening to discuss collective bargaining sessions per RCW 42.30, .140, per N4, and pending and potential litigation per RCW 42.30, .110, per N1, per N B, and 42.30, per N110, bracket 1, or sorry, per N1, per N I. These items are expected to last 35 minutes. Action is anticipated to follow in open session. I do submit my mayor's report in advance, but I did note that I forgot to add one item. I did want to make sure that council was aware, as well as the public, about WashDOT's upcoming open house. It's on April 25th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, at Tibbetts Creek Manor, going to be talking about the auxiliary lanes on I-90. That passes, you know, that construction work there will actually be adjacent to two of our neighborhoods, and so there's a huge community concern there. And I realized I'd forgotten to put it on. If I didn't announce it tonight, I wouldn't have a chance to do that till the council meeting. So there is information available online. On April 3rd, I attended Cascade Water Alliance's Board Retreat, where we discuss future drinking water supply. Even though climate change may change our weather patterns, the overall amount of precipitation in our region is expected to remain constant, more in the form of rain and less in the form of snow over the years to come. Our issues will be storage, not quantity, compared to other areas in the U.S. that have abundant storage and water quality issue, and water quantity issues. On April 4th, I presented with other female mayors on a panel at the Go Green Conference in Seattle. April 9th, I attended a meeting at the Department of Ecology's Northwest Regional Office with Eastside Fire and Rescue, Sammish Plateau Water District, and Ecology Staff. This team has assembled funding from various entities to complete a soil and groundwater investigation for PFAS, a constituent in groundwater that the city of Issaquah is currently providing treatment for. We are hoping to begin our investigation this summer, with study results and next steps sometime late this fall. On April 12th, I attended the Cascade Water Alliance Resource Committee meeting. We discussed several capital projects, and we're provided with an update on the Lake Taps Water Quality Project. In the future, Councilmember Hunt will be serving on the Resource Committee, and I'll be moving over to the Finance Committee. On April 12th, I attended the Transportation, PSRC's Transportation Policy Board. The board made a near-unanimous recommendation to recommend adoption of the regional transportation plan to the executive. The Sound City representatives at that meeting expressed concerns over the unaddressed transportation gaps in the current system, similar to what Councilmember Winterstein was just talking about. There was a significant discussion, but no amendments were made to the recommendation. A couple of issue updates. Moratorium update, you did hear from Councilmember Goodman, Chair of Land and Shore, that inclusion visions was coming back to the Land and Shore Committee. But inclusionary requirements, staff is working with Econ Northwest to evaluate the impact the proposed inclusionary, inclusionary requirements would have had on the Atlas project in town, using Atlas as a case study. It's expected a report and presentation will be made to Land and Shore at the committee's April meeting on April 19th. Update on Cougar Mountain and Bergsma, there is no new news in regards to the property known as Bergsma. At the March 5th city council meeting, I shared that we are partnering with the Trust for Public Land in exploring acquisition options for this property. In that work, park staff and Trust for Public Land staff are collaborating on researching grant options and other funding strategies that would be needed to support any size or scale of acquisition of the property. An update on Talis Parcels 7, 8, and 9. Talis Parcels 7 and 8, the city's geotechnical consultants have finished their first review of a new critical area study for Parcel 7 and 8. The property owner's consultants are currently working through the city's comments, and we are expecting this final plat will be before the city's hearing examiner in May. Talis Parcel 9, the property owner is continuing to work on stabilizing the property. By the end of the month, as is expected, they will be three-quarters done with the construction of the first wall system. Last week, the city issued a permit for Wall 3, and work is expected to commence on that wall later this month. The city expects stabilization efforts will continue through the end of 2018. An update on the ending of the development agreements for Talis in the Highlands. At the March 19th council meeting, the council referred ending of the Talis Development Agreement and imposing new replacement regulations to the Planning Policy Commission for review of the proposed zoning designation for Talis Parcel 9. I just want to make sure the community and the council are aware that the Planning Policy Commission meeting is scheduled for May 10th. And I have a rather long update on a property in Issaquah called Providence Heights because of some recent action that happened last week. So bear with me. This one is a few paragraphs long. There's been a lot of public comment received by the city regarding Providence Heights and the proposal by the property owners to demolish the current buildings. The Providence Heights Campus is located at 4221, 228th Avenue Southeast, adjacent to Providence Point. The property is owned by Plateau Campus LLC, a wholly-owned subsidiary of Church Home, previously known as the City Church, a nonprofit, non-denominational church headquartered in Kirkland. Church Home has decided to demolish the buildings and sell the property to provide revenue for their growing ministries. They believe that landmarking the existing structures reduces the value that could get, they could get from the property sale, and which would adversely impact their ability to fulfill their religious mission and expand their ministries. Following the city's CIPA decision on the demolition of the buildings, the Sammish Heritage Society submitted an application to landmark the property. The city has code IMC 18.20, Protection and Preservation of Landmarks, Landmark Sites and Districts, that provides for a landmark commission and a process for landmarking properties within the city. Since the city does not have enough requests to justify its own commission, the city has an interlocal agreement with King County to use the county's Landmark and Heritage Commission with one local representative for any preservation requests within the city. In July of 2017, the commission designated the property as a landmark, and the city's hearing examiner remanded the CIPA decision back to the city to consider how the landmark status affects the decision. At the time of the landmark designation, Church Home's attorneys advised the city that the designate designation violated Church Home's rights to the free exercise of religion under the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution and Article 1, Section 11 of the Washington Constitution. Since the city agreed with Church Home's attorneys due to clear legal precedent, First Covenant Church of Seattle versus City of Seattle, where the courts found that the government's interest in preservation of aesthetic and historic structures is not compelling and does not justify the infringement of a church's right to freely exercise religion, the city entered into a settlement agreement with Church Home, under which the city agreed not to oppose a court judgment holding the landmark designation unconstitutional, in exchange for a release of all potential damage claims by Church Home. On the 12th of April, King County Superior Court Judge Julie Spector found that landmarking the Providence Heights property was unconstitutional and vacated that decision. Further, the judge prohibited the city and King County from accepting any other nomination seeking to designate this property as a landmark, so long as Church Home owns the property. And the city and King County are legally prohibited from continuing to delay Church Home's demolition permit on the basis of the landmark designation. Judge Spector also found that the city and Church Home had entered into the settlement agreement as an arms-length transaction, and that the result was a fair and reasonable one. On Friday, Preserve Providence Heights appealed the reissued CIPA decision. That appeal will be held by the city's hearing examiner, and the date of that hearing has yet to be scheduled. That concludes my mayor's report. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance of tonight's meeting. If authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll for April 16th been reviewed?
They have.
Yeah, they have.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Councilmember Ray?
I'd like to move Agenda Bill 7586, the surplus city equipment, to regular business.
Thank you. I'm going to propose that we move it to, or suggest that we move it to Item A on regular business, since we do have the Public Works Operation Director here to answer questions if needed. There has been a motion made, I'm going to check with Tisha here. So there is a request to bring something down, but we do not need a motion to bring something down. We'll be putting it as Item A. Thank you. Besides moving that one item down, does anybody wish to move any other? You? If no one does, can I have someone make a motion?
I'd like to move the modified consent agenda as listed in the packet.
Is there a second? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the modified consent calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is public hearing. AB 7533, first major amendment to the Costco Development Agreement. This is a continuation of a public hearing, and has been This is a continuation of a public hearing and has been referred from Council Land and Shore, of an item that is referred to Council Land and Shore. This public hearing was opened at the February 20th council meeting and continued to April 16th. The Land and Shore Committee heard this item at their March meeting. Before I reopen the public hearing, I'd like to invite Keith Niven, Economic and Development Services Director, to briefly present this item. Thanks, Keith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, City Council. So this is, so Agenda Bill is coming back from Land and Shore. So we actually opened the hearing on February 20th, and the expectation is we'll go back to Land and Shore after this evening and possibly come back as soon as May 7th. So what's happening here is the city is asking for a major amendment to the Costco Development Agreement to look at basically putting the last transportation project from that development agreement on hold for a limited period of time while we work on another project with State Parks to look at whether or not their main entrance could be moved closer to the intersection, which is the third transportation project from the Costco Development Agreement. So, listed here are a number of policy questions that we've started to talk through at committee. I assume we will continue to talk through those at committee this week. And to give you a visual understanding of what we're talking about, so this intersection right here, and Holiday Inn is just off your map, and the old Tully's sadly, was right here. And this is the entrance to the park down here on the left. And State Parks has expressed a desire to see if that intersect, that entrance could be moved closer to this intersection for visibility reasons. They think that there is some confusion about where the entrance is to the park, and they would see a benefit if it could be moved closer. What we don't want to do is move forward with the Costco improvements to this intersection and potentially find that by moving the entrance to the state park closer to this interchange that it would have wanted a different outcome. And so what we're asking for is to put this project on hold while our transportation consultants look at moving this entrance to the park closer to 12th Avenue. So that's, and Sheldon Lynn, Director of Public Works Engineering, is here if there's any technical questions that y'all might have.
Thank you, Keith.
Otherwise, that's the end.
Any questions of staff before we open the public hearing? Thank you. The guidelines for citizen comments that are on the agenda also apply for the public hearing, and I'm going to reopen the public hearing at 8:30 for this evening. Has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
No.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak during this public hearing this evening?
No.
All right. Second call, anyone liking to, anyone wishing to speak this evening on this bill? And for the final time, does anyone wish to speak this evening? Okay, no speakers. Is there a motion to continue the hearing? Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. I would move, excuse me, move to continue the public hearing to May 7, 2018, and refer Agenda Bill 7533 to the April 19th, 2018 Council Land and Shore Committee for additional review and recommendation, returning to the full council on May 7th.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of continuing the public hearing to May 7th, 2018, and referring AB 7533 to the April 19th, 2018 Council Land and Shore Committee for additional review and recommendation, returning to the full council on May 7th, 2018, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is opposed? Carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda this evening is regular business. AB 7586, surplus of city equipment. This item was brought down from the consent agenda. For Councilmember Ray is requesting a clarification. Councilmember Ray, would you like to speak to the bill?
Absolutely. I'd just like to state for the record that Agenda Bill 7586, surplus city equipment includes vehicles that value is in excess of the stated $3,500 in the Agenda Bill. And I'd like the record to show that Agenda Bill 7586 should more accurately state that the estimated value of these items is between $0 and $17,000 to reflect what's actually on the list of equipment to be surplused.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. So that is the reason it has come down off of the consent agenda? Would you care to make a motion, and then we can have a discussion?
I would.
If you had it in front of you.
I had it, and I.
Get someone else to make a motion.
I gotta keep up. I'd like to move that we declare items identified in AB 7586 as surplus and authorize the administration to dispose of them in accordance with Washington state law, with the modification to the Agenda Bill that the maximum value is $17,000, not $3,500.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I'm just going to check with the clerk. Is it necessary to add that into the motion, or is it?
It's an estimate too, so I'd love that word to be included.
With the microphone.
Interim City Administrator.
Just again to clarify, those figures that are included in the AB, and as Councilmember Ray has suggested, we modify our estimates. One does not know what the value of each of those items is until we actually have people at the auction bidding on them and saying what they wish to pay for them. So I was just suggesting we use the word estimate in connection with listing that new dollar amount.
Thank you. And Councilmember Ray, do you have the motion written down, since it's different than the motion that was in the packet? Or did you just do that off the top of your head?
I just did that off the top of my head.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna get the clerk to read it back, so we're all clear what we're voting on.
Thank you. And I think I did use the word estimate.
If you didn't, we'll see if we can slot it in there.
Well, we will.
Okay. Tisha?
Declare the items identified in AB 7586 as surplus and authorize the administration to dispose of them in accordance with Washington state law, with the modification to the Agenda Bill that the estimated maximum value be $17,000?
The word estimated, eh? Is there any questions or additional discussion? Not, are you ready for the vote? Tisha, do I have to read it again? Okay, thanks, because I can't write as fast as she can type, so. So it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Awesome. That passes unanimously.
Move my trouble.
Thank you very much. The next item, Item B on our regular business agenda this evening, is AB 7484, teen cafe partnership and lease agreement. This item is coming out of Services and Safety Committee, and I'd like to invite Parks and Recreation Director Jeff Watling to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Appreciate it. As Councilmember and Services Committee Chair Ray mentioned, we talked about this last Tuesday, April 10th, at committee, had a really good discussion about that. The recommendation did come out 3-0 from that discussion, but just given the council interest through this process, community interest through this process, it was desired to bring it back to regular business. Opportunity for me, given how familiar you are already with this partnership and this potential real synergy, I'll give a quick staff report highlighting a number of things, highlighting the background and touching on the background. I'll highlight the process that we undertook for this. I'll also highlight the site selection process that we undertook, and then some key elements of the lease agreement itself. So, background. Certainly, a number of years of work by the community group really began to foster this idea. That group presented a letter of interest to the city in June of last year, really highlighting their, the elements, the framework of their business plan, and specifically requesting a partnership with the city, and the city exploring the use of some public, a public building for them to have this, this program. After investigation and research into that, discussion with council, it was on the September 5th council meeting. The council then directed staff through a prior Agenda Bill to further explore this partnership and further explore specifically the opportunity for a city building, city square footage, to host this, host this program. We then began work with the teen cafe group itself. It was pretty clear that there was a preference of locating this program near the community center and specifically near the schools. Great opportunity for synergy there. Two public meetings were hosted in the fall, first on October 4th, and then the second meeting December 5th. Between those two meetings, we also had an update. We came back to Services and Safety at the November meeting and began to lay out the framework for what sites are potentially available near the community center, and also the criteria with which we would begin to look at and analyze those four sites. From that work and from that discussion in November with the committee, but then also on December 5th with the public, we prepared this, this criteria, this initial assessment that was shared. We identified the four locations in and around the community center. These are all spaces that the city currently owns. All of them are Zoned CF, so none of these are commercial space. None of these were spaces that we would have potentially looked at commercially leasing. As we went through this assessment, we identified five criteria that they were all run through. This was not a highly complex process, but it felt like it fit really well. We identified three grades. Is it a great fit? Is it a good fit? Or there's some, some concerns that would need to be addressed with this site? It became pretty evident, both visually, but then as we had the public meeting and hearing the public feedback and hearing the feedback from the community partners, there was a location, the number three on this scale, the 235 building, and that's a portion of the 235 building. It became pretty evident scored the highest and really began to look like the best, the best fit. From that discussion and from that conversation, we began work specifically on that, on that site as consensus was reached. Historically, this building has been used for a variety of ways publicly, even before the city. It was used by the county and the school district, most recently used a variety of ways by Parks and Recreation, and most currently used as staff offices and storage space. As you recall, as we went through the budget process last year, within the Parks and Recreation Department, we've been doing quite a bit of review of our functions and our services. That led to some realignment that we began looking at as a department, and in that realignment work, we really saw and made it a priority, if you recall, through the budget process of how do we take our recreation staff, and in particular, the recreation staff that were in that building, and what if we were to combine them all at the community center and create some real synergy amongst the recreation team? We also, as we looked at expanding our capacity within park planning and development, if you recall, we had one park planning and development staff person in that building. Now with adding two, we saw as opportunity to realign them to the Trails House. Historically, that is where park planning and development was located. In doing that move, we, we saw the opportunity of creating a community room, a community meeting room in the 235 building, and having storage stay there. But that realignment work really led to the opportunity of this vacant and available program space that a program such as the teen cafe could, could work within. So really, a strategic opportunity as we were looking at realigning some of our services and also looking at the potential of what this program could do, and really beginning to see the synergy of the community center, the pool, and this space that would have a community room, as well as this real focus program for high schoolers through the garage. I keep calling it the teen cafe, I gotta get used to the new, the new name. But really seeing that as a recreation campus of sorts. As we began work with Development Services Department, looking at the land use, again as a, as a CF, as a community facility, initial site analysis, some of the initial pre-app and permitting work, it really all confirmed, that continued to confirm that this really was a good location for this partnership. That then began some work, a couple of months of work, looking and drafting the lease agreement. Our city attorney, thank you, Mr. Heaney, gave us an initial draft to take a look at and begin to shape and mold, and through a series of meetings and conversations with our partners, have, have put together a lease agreement that we think becomes a great vehicle and a template for, or the vehicle for this partnership. But I would not say, as we go into this, it does not define this relationship. I wouldn't call this a leasing, a tenant-owner relationship. This really is a much more in-depth partnership than that. But the lease agreement itself is, is important, so I'll highlight some of the elements there. Friends of Youth, it's important to note, is serving as teen cafes fiscal sponsors. So as you see in the lease agreement, this is a lease agreement with Friends of Youth as that fiscal sponsor for the teen cafe group. There certainly is language and room within this lease that should and when teen cafe becomes its own nonprofit. There's opportunity with our approval, with the city's approval as the owner, for this lease to be assigned to a new nonprofit should teen cafe, or when teen cafe becomes its own nonprofit. The program itself is going to occupy the southern two-thirds of the building. The utility expenses will be shared proportionately. So again, they are responsible for all operating costs, all the programming costs with this, with this work and with this space is going to be the responsibility of the teen cafe, of the tenant. So moving forward, as we look at this, there's no direct operating costs for the city in this partnership. All tenant improvements are also the responsibility of the tenant. In this work and, and as the city has, in a number of cases, leased CF, community facility space to other nonprofit groups, we see the public value and the, and the community benefit that's going to be achieved through this nonprofit work as, as the value in lieu of, of rent. As I said earlier, the lease agreement is the vehicle, but that doesn't define the relationship. It's really through coordination, collaboration with the recreation team, with our pool staff on an ongoing and frequent basis that's really going to be instrumental in this work. You may have noticed Kathy Jones, our community center supervisor, was here earlier in the bright blue shirt with a couple of our Isaguas Youth Advisory Board members. I think that certainly demonstrates both her as staff and the youth advisory board's interest and intent in seeing this program really being something that further augments the, the services that are provided to this community. There is an opera, a performance requirement in, in an annual report, as well as a minimum hours of operation that are going to be required by this group. We had some additional discussion at the Services and Safety Committee meeting, some, some great discussion on a couple of other items with the lease agreement that I want to touch upon. One had to do with insurance and indemnification, given that they, the, the program, the cost of the program, the operation of the program is totally the responsibility of the tenant. There's very strong indemnification language. There's also very strong insurance requirements that this group needs to provide. Given our aim and our goal and our aspiration, that we see this as being a very successful partnership, but also being prudent in the what-ifs, there is some default language that's in this agreement that due to either lack of performance or operational budget struggles, as owner, we certainly have the ability, God forbid, and certainly, again, not the plan, but there is language in there that we could terminate the, the lease. Another great question was how do we look at best practices for managing a lease agreement? And, and given, again, the combination of that indemnification language and also that default language, that clawback as the owner, but I think one of the key best practices that we see in this is recognizing it truly as a partnership. This, this is public space, it's public space that... It's public space that is going to have some other public uses within that building. There's other public facilities that surround this. That frequent coordination, collaboration, communication is going to be essential. And I, and I think a very key way of making sure that this is a partnership, this is a, an agreement that has significant public benefit for, for many years to come. Just a quick highlight, I, I won't take the full tour, but certainly in this work of, of looking at the lease agreement, the garage team has done some great work in looking at and having an architect begin to, to really map out and, and imagine what this new space is in this southern portion of the building. It's going to be certainly a, a very exciting space. And Executive Director Kaylee Jake is here. Should you have any programmatic questions you want to ask her, or I'm certainly available to answer any questions you might have. You're familiar with the logo on your left. The logo on the right is the newly commissioned garage logo that they're, they're really excited about. So with that, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. This has been before council a couple of times, but not necessarily in this format. So it was really helpful for you tonight to provide such a complete description of what the council will be voting on. Thank you. Other questions?
Do we want to move it first? I do, I have a couple of questions about...
We can do either one. Councilmember Ray, were you considering a motion?
I'd be happy to. I moved that we authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the lease agreement with Friends of Youth as the, as presented for the purpose of providing the Teen Cafe program within a portion of city-owned building at the 235 First Avenue.
Second? The move in second. A council discussion. Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. The, lots of good terms. So I read the agreement and have a few simple questions, and I appreciate the summary that you provided. And I think you meant the logo that's new is the one on the left up there, right?
Hope so.
The other left, okay. And, and again, I, I did appreciate the terms are in there. There's just a couple I wanted to touch upon, just for clarity and make sure I understood a couple of things. And paragraph 13, 1, 2, it does talk about earthquake and flood insurance, and I'm just wondering, we're requiring the tenant to get that? Do we have earthquake and flood insurance on that now?
I would imagine that's...
No, just, okay. I just, if, if we're putting the requirement upon as a, you know, on the tenant to have that, I would just assume that we were doing that ourselves.
And I believe we do, and I could confirm with facilities. Our insurance probably has to do with the structure. I, I think the asking for insurance here is to ensure their, their investment there.
Okay. Okay, that's a good clarification. Thank you, thank you very much for that. And it talks about, and you showed us the high-level schematic of what the architect had done, and in 7.6, the last sentence says, "Tenants shall use its reasonable best efforts to cause the tenant improvements to be completed within 180 days of the, of the commencement date." And I was just curious, it would be good to hear whether or not the, what the, if the cost for those potential improvements, has that already been covered? I mean, what's the likelihood that there's any risk to this date or not? I, I just think it'd be good to, to know what the status is.
As Kaylee Jake is coming forward, she has some great news about capital budget and funding those tenant improvements.
Sure. So I thought it was interesting that, that you got a report from the, your lobbyists. So we were fortunate to receive some state funding as well. We were in the supplementary budget for $100,000. Thank you, Mark Mullet, for shepherding that through. So that on top of, we just received funding from Isaguat Quanis, and we've, we have two more grants pending with Isaguat Rotary and Samish Rotary. Our, our estimated budget for the improvements is about $130,000. And so we're getting right there with our ass. And I'll also mention that we've raised half of the operating costs for the first three years in pledges. So, yeah, so we're ready to roll. And our permits have been submitted. So, just no pressure.
Okay, thank you for that additional information. I just had more, it's more of a, a comment on the lease more than anything else in chap, paragraph three term. It says, "The term of this lease shall be 10 years." I think that's amazing. And I'm really, I'm happy for all involved because anybody getting started in a nonprofit, especially, there's a lot of variables to, to manage. And to know that you have access to the facility really allows you to do the planning and take the long view. And I'm, I'm, I do support this. I'm very enthusiastically support this term. I was glad to see it in there. Nice job.
Thank you, Councilmember Winterstein. Anyone else for discussion, comments? Council President Martz.
So some votes that we take are tough calls, and you have to really sort of work through the issues and decide how things check against your, you know, your values. And then, and then other votes are not that. Other votes are just a joy and make you proud and feel lucky to be on City Council, and this is one of those votes. And, you know, I want to go back, set the wayback machine for a couple of things. Friday, September 16th, 2011, Paul and I, I was still building rockets for Jeff Bezos, and Paul was not yet on City Council, although he was soon to be, soon to be on Council. And we went to the Boiler Room in Port Townsend and met with those folks, and they cooked us up a homemade dinner. And we heard about how the Boiler Room had impacted kids in Port Townsend, kids that didn't feel connected to sports and, and really, you know, were not thriving before the Boiler Room came along. And it was, it was, it was food for the soul as well as, as food for, for the stomach. Then the next month, on Tuesday, October 4th, 2011, I went to the Youth Advisory Board, which I didn't, I didn't know anything about. I took my then 13-year-old daughter with me and at the invite of Barb de Michel. And we heard about how kids thought about having a space. At the time, we were talking about the Human Services Campus. We were talking about potentially partnering with a church. Kids said that maybe going to a church would be a little complicated for some of them. That was good feedback. But it was really, it was, this whole thing was in its infancy. And in addition to, you know, helping stoke some of my enthusiasm on this, I didn't know it at the time, but this would begin a path for my daughter, which would lead to her getting very involved in the city, getting very involved in Youth Advisory Board, getting very involved in the Isaguat, at the time, Isaguat Teen Cafe effort. And she's now majoring in public health with minors and political science and women's studies. So you just never know on any given day what, you know, going to a meeting is going to do. So, you know, I mentioned these two things. I, I thank you for your time in letting me roll back on memory lane a little bit, but this is, this is a really outstanding effort. I know how hard Kaylee and Jeff have, have worked together to make this happen. I know how hard Kaylee and all the students involved over the years have worked to make this happen, both the students getting involved and, and looking at, at the various options and figuring out what the operating model was going to look like and what sort of, you know, you know, what sort of services might be involved and, and creating a more welcoming environment for students. So they have done their homework, and I am just so proud to be able to vote yes for this bill this evening.
Thank you, Council President Martz. Deputy Council President Ties.
So I, I would definitely echo a lot of what Council President Martz has said. I'm very supportive of this agenda bill. This is something that my friends and through all of my time on PTSA, there's been so much talk about seeing something like this come to fruition. And so being able to watch this grow over time has been an amazing experience. And, and coming from services and safety, we had a very long, long discussion. This bill has come back several times. The first time that, that we talked about a location, it, we took that out, and there was community engagement around that. It ended up that that maybe, that there was a lot of feedback about that location. And then the process evolved and a new location was found. And so this amazing collaboration that's happened between the Teen Cafe, Friends of Youth, and the city has just, again, been, been just amazing to, to watch this grow. We, we also, just for my fellow council members, did talk a significant amount about the lease. We, we talked about best practices. We talked about some things that maybe the city had gone through in the past and just making sure that we had captured all of those best practices within the lease. So we talked about indemnification, best practices, the, the lease, and, and really at the end, this had a lot of support coming out of safety and services. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members looking at the four who have not commented yet? Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you.
All by Councilmember Ramos.
I wanted to thank the community members that have come forward and spoken to council, including a number of young people that either came and attended and supported today or came and spoke today. I think that feedback has been very helpful. I also think there's a clear public benefit here, and it has been articulated very well, and the partnership is very well thought out. I think this is an opportunity for the city to partner to address a real need in our community, and that is a need for teens to have a space to access services and programming and to just be themselves. And so for all these reasons, I am very much in support of this bill as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Ramos.
Thank you. I'd just like to compliment all the people who aren't here that were a part of this. There are students that started this a long time ago that are not directly benefiting, but their work is getting down to students that are here. It's a long process sometimes, but that's the way it works sometimes. You work on something and somebody else gets the direct benefit later, and that's just fine. That's the way life works. I like to, to comment the fact also that as we got closer, that there was continued work through that, that the first, you find a location, you're so excited about it, it's like, let's do it. And then with a little more work, a little more input from the public, you find out, well, we could actually do a little better. And then we get a place that's actually better by doing just a little more work and not just jumping at the first thing that possibility, because you thought there'd never be a possibility, right? So compliment, sticking with the work, staying with it, finding a good solution in the long run. Just, I, I just love that and how the community works. Working with students is going to be great. I look forward to working with you and on a number of things. Also, from human services side, being on the Human Services Commission before, this is a direct thing. That's a human services thing. We always try to look across the spectrum in the human services from youth to adult and senior. And this is something that it didn't quite fit there, but it does, because this is a city putting directly into that, not through that kind of grant program, but it is providing that, that big broader spectrum that they're always looking for at both ends particularly. So I am, I am very supportive of this. I thank everybody for the work from, 2011, you're saying, so we're talking about, what, seven years or more? And look forward to seeing this and seeing students have a good place to do good things. Thank you.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. So I agree with everything that's been said. I don't have anything additional except to say, thanks everybody for all your work, those who are here now and who are not here now. And this is just super exciting, and it's going to be a great addition to our community for teens. So I'm, of course, very supportive and very excited.
Thank you. Not seeing any other hands raised, so are we done with discussion and ready to vote? All those in favor of authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute the lease agreement with Friends of Youth as presented for the purpose of providing the Teen Cafe program with a portion of the city-owned building at the 235, 235 First Avenue signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
The last item under regular business this evening is AB 7594, funding requests for temporary staffing resources. This is a request to authorize additional funding. This has not been considered previously, either at a council meeting or a committee meeting, and I'd like to invite Interim City Administrator Emily Moon to present this item. Thank you, Emily.
Good evening. This bill makes a request for allocations in three areas in the city. I'll preface going through those requests by saying, as you're aware, we have a really robust work plan for this year and have, in at least two of these areas, been hampered by some vacancies. And so at the mayor's request, I have put together a proposal to assist us in filling some of those duties and responsibilities in the short term, and hopefully that will allow us to accomplish that ambitious 2018 work plan and sustain progress on important city goals. So the three areas that we are seeking funding resources include human resources, a request of $100,000 to basically outsource a range of our recruiting functions. Our human resources department staff has not had a lot of time to do needed activities outside of recruitment and some collective bargaining work and urgent matters. So in your packet, you have a list of other tasks that have been put to the back burner or have been getting far less attention that we need to make progress on. Human Resources Director has contacted some firms to assess how much we might need in order to accomplish those recruiting tasks through the end of 2018. We would also evaluate whether that's a good methodology in the future for us to employ. And you may see a request in your 2019 budget to continue to perform that function out of house or an additional full-time staff resource to perform that function. Second area, excuse me, is in our communications unit. We have a request for $60,000 there right now. In that group, I'm missing half of the team, and the two individuals that are left are specialized positions, one that is mainly responsible for our cable TV channel and our video programming, and then the other position is our neighborhood engagement coordinator. Those two individuals have, over the last several months, been having to sort of work outside of their job description and provide other needed services to the city in terms of communication. That has included assisting with our social media exchanges, website content development, assisting our departments with outreach activities, developing survey instruments, printed materials, preparing written remarks for colleagues as they go to external meetings, a whole, whole range of duties. And we're at risk of not being able to accomplish all of the 2018 work plan items. So I thought I would also just stress to you what is on that 2018 work plan so that you are reminded about our intent for community outreach on these pieces. So we have the strategic plan, the interchange justification report, sign code update, public noticing improvements like SAM, EIS, and master planning, Old Town Parking Study and recommendations, Squawk Talus Community Connections Program, transit-oriented development, branding and wayfinding, internally our class comp program, which requires internal messaging, off-leash dog park planning, senior center programming, future Parks and Recreation software update, which will be externally focused, as long, as well as utility billing software, which will be externally focused, traffic calming program revamp, and several capital projects, two of which are the Newport Projects and Gilman Corridor. So that's, that's not the full list of 2018. That's quite a bit for two individuals to pull off who were not hired to do that function to begin with. In the executive office, as the mayor had requested a proposal to help augment our staffing in that department, which is also at about 50%, those are temporary... in that department, which is also at about 50%, those are temporary vacancies, but we believe some temporary help will help us to facilitate all the work of the other departments. So I've put together a proposal for some assistance on two different levels. First, being experienced managerial level, some project management help would be appreciated. We envision that person also providing some operational guidance to our departments and day-to-day issues facilitation and resolution. Second would be on the lower-level positions of, say, a city management analyst who would help us perform some of the research data analysis, recommendation preparation, community reporting, and team and project facilitation that our office is involved with on a daily basis. That request is at $160,000, with $100,000 going toward the two part-time limited-term management analysts and $60,000 going toward a part-time, more managerial-level position. So those are the staffing resources requests. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Emily? Councilmember Ray.
I'll get things started. So this is the middle of April, and we were talking about the work plan. So I'm not exactly sure how to express this, but we're only three months into the year, and the work plan last year that we developed was funded by the budget, and now we're finding we keep coming back for more things. So I'm just trying to understand what has changed since the budget was important. What I'm trying to ask is, what are we going to do differently so that we don't have to do this again three months from now, six months from now, a year from now?
Sure. I guess I'll take your last question first.
That's the only question.
Okay. Very good. There were comments along the way. That's true.
Yes.
I think in the future, we need to do a better job. I believe that we have, quite frankly, been communicating that the work plan is too full for our current staff to be able to handle. And we have asked for some positions in the past. Those have not been authorized in some cases. In other cases, we have heard from the council that there's a lack of desire to fund additional full-time equivalents, and therefore that has kept us from asking for additional positions. On the flip side, though, that has not diminished the amount of work that is desired by the community and by the council. So we need to get in better alignment on that. I think good project management dictates that you have a resource plan, and we have not always had a resource plan. It's common practice, particularly on our capital side, to also ask for additional staffing resources. You can tie that back to the project budget, and it seems to be more palatable to most. But on the operations side, that has not been the case. We have not asked for sufficient resources, and there hasn't quite been the same level of support for that. You also suggested that some of these could have been foreseen, and that's not the case. Budget development happened in July for city staff, was approved at the end of December, and most of these vacancies happened after that point in time.
Councilmember Ray or other councilmembers? Councilmember Winterstein?
I need help with something I maybe should know. In communications and the executive, you just said that we have vacancies. This is a request for funds. However, the actual salaries for those positions had already been approved, so maybe this is more of a technical question than anything. Why do we need to do this additional authorization rather than you just being able to use the already authorized money?
Sure. So in some cases, those salaries are still being utilized to pay for people who are out on leave, for example. In other cases, communications coordinator position, for example, we will have only a couple months, I hope, of vacancy salary savings. And then we have requests for perhaps part-time salaries, and then we have a request for contractual dollars. And our financial management practices do not allow us to move salary and benefits allocations into professional services. So in the case of a contract, we can't do that. Now, what we can do is, at the point in time when we need to do budget amendments, we can look at how those things offset and simply ask for the difference.
Okay. So the financial practices, best practices, is, I think, was the kind of the technical answer I was looking for. And then one other question about, especially in the executive area, because of the way this is structured, and I, we received an email from you, Emily, in response to some questions where it did address the search for a city administrator. And I interpret that to mean that that has not started yet. And given the structure of this proposal, I'm just wondering, does this somehow presage some potential change in that part of the organization compared to what we've had historically? A curiosity.
Good question.
I'd just simply answer that as no.
Okay? That's a complete answer. Thank you.
Actually, if it's okay, I'd like to chime in. Stepping from a councilmember role into a mayor's role, there's a time period of evaluating the work that's on the table and the resources you have to do it. And I've talked about this with council leadership quite a bit. We are going to be going out to do a search, and the timing of that has not been finalized or shared yet with council leaderships. So we're not expecting structural change. We just have not started the search process yet.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ramos. And then Councilmember Ray.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions coming, kind of fitting here, say a few things, and then clarify my questions, I think. One question, I guess, just technical, and you probably won't have it off the top of your head, but I'll ask you, is how much, how many, how much dollar amount have we either already amended the budget this year or already have planned to make an amendment to the budget, you know, that we have agreed to somewhere along the line, and they just haven't done the amendment yet? Do you know for this year?
I don't, off the top of my head, no.
Wouldn't think so. All right. And so what I'm trying to get to here is the budget process, which during the budget process, I had some concerns with. Because when I'm balancing a budget, every time you spend something, some money here, you're not spending it some other place. You're always trading off because there's only so much money. So when we come with amendments of this nature, a really hard thing for me to understand is, what are we not doing? Because we just said we're going to take, your request is take $300,000 and spend it over here, which wasn't scheduled to be spent. So that means we're not spending it somewhere else. And when you come with a half of, me, a half of the equation, you can't tell what the other half is. That's my rant, I guess.
Would you like, would you like an answer to that? Would you like Emily to answer that?
Well, it was kind of rhetorical, because I didn't think she could, like my first question, but if you can answer that.
If it's phrased as a question, I'd be happy to answer it.
Okay. Can you tell me what we're not going to do if we spend this money here?
The proposal is to take it basically from fund balance, which wasn't allocated. So the answer of your question is, we would not be electing, so I'm going to try to avoid double negatives here. By spending this money out of fund balance, there isn't something that will not be done. I still did a double negative. But did you follow? Did you follow?
It makes sense.
All right.
Right. But what doesn't work for me, there is something that won't be done, because at some time, we could take this money and spend it on something else.
Sure. That fund balance is available to you for whatever prioritized need you have. I'm suggesting there's one.
Which is why I'm saying, which we don't know that, because later on, when we look at either next year's budget, there's less money in next year's budget of what we want to do, right? So we're taking something out of, at some point in time, we've taken this money away from spending it. So I guess, and the process for me is just really, really tantamount that this item, a request for a third of a million dollars, I really found out about it Friday night. So I'm looking at how this process comes to us. We have a general process that things come, whether they come from leadership or administration, they go through committee, you know, the referral to committee, and they come back, and there's some in-depth work done. And that really bothers me that that's not done here. That process is generally there, and I think that process is there for a reason. There's no legal requirement that it be done, but it's there for a reason, so that we'll work through things, have full understanding, full disclosure to those kinds of questions that I have now that you really can't answer, and I understand that. But those kinds of things need to be shown, because the fiscal responsibility for us is one of our top duties. So that's, I guess that's what I have to say for now. Well, actually, I want to say one more thing.
Go ahead.
And as with all these questions, I do want to say that I really, I respect all the staff and all the work they do, and this is, any of these comments are talking about process, or not any, we reflect it in any of the staff or any of the work they do and the need for keeping that work up to the standards of the load that we give you at times, of course. So I just want to mention that as well. So just, I'm concerned with process, not with all the work at any time.
Councilmember Ramos, I want to add a couple of things. What I'm doing right now is tracking questions, and if questions are answered tonight, my expectation would be that the council will vote on it. So I think why it's not following the similar processes, this is not an agenda bill of a programmatic nature or anything like that, that committees typically vet. We are hoping that we provided enough information in the lead-up to this and last week that we can answer questions. I agree with you. If they're not all answered tonight, it would make sense to refer it to committee. The only question I have so far that hasn't been answered is, what is the budget adjustment? We have not brought you a budget adjustment for this year. That is a piece of information you asked for. So I would continue to ask the council members to ask questions tonight and see if answers can be provided, and whether or not you're satisfied that you can vote on it this evening, then we'll vote on it. Otherwise, we'll talk about what other options we have. So if there are more questions, let's keep moving with questions.
You see first?
Now I'm losing track. I think you two have asked questions. I'll move to Councilmember Goodman, Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. Emily, in the information we received from you, and I don't remember if this is daylighted in the agenda bill, there was information about the impacts of a delay, and so I wondered if you could just daylight that a little bit for people who are watching.
My honest answer is, I'm not sure. I think we, impacts can be, maybe summarized as, we will need to think about how many projects we can have underway at one time, if we only have two instead of four people helping provide, for example, the public communication that we want to do. So that's one. Either eliminating or delaying projects we had intended to do, quality of the projects that we undertake, I'd be concerned about that perhaps, but maybe the answer to that first question affects the answer to the second. And then certainly, as a leader in this organization, as a manager, I get concerned about the health of my employees and their burnout rate. I have people who are working way too many hours right now, and I get concerned about losing them, either to health issues or because they decide grass must be greener somewhere else. So, you know, I don't have any, that's just gut. I don't have any way to measure that, but I see that as a potential issue. It's certainly something that we have heard in exit interviews, so I need to be mindful of that. Thanks.
Councilmember Winterstein.
Actually, I think Councilmember Hunt.
Councilmember Hunt, and then Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. So you had made a comment, which was that good project management dictates that you need a resource plan, and then also you were talking about the work plan and all of the items on the work plan, and the work plan being, I think, untenable. And I am wondering, is there a plan to revisit, edit, perhaps change the timeline on the work plan?
Not at this moment. We've been doing that on an ongoing basis. We don't have a formal way, a formal plan to come back, for example, to council, because there are items I would want council's consent on to delay or not undertake. Certainly have been talking with council leadership at times about timelines for different projects and how we've had to space those out for different reasons. One I could think of is the Mobility Master Plan that we have said, until we get that staffing resource onboard, the Senior Transportation Planner, we're not able to undertake that, but there was clarity, right? We had a staffing resource proposed, granted, and at least the first tasks. And so it's easy to say, we don't have the resource, therefore we can't go forward on the project. Where it's more difficult is taking the long list of projects that we're going to have multiple employees working on them, because they're cross-departmental in nature, and thinking about, okay, if you don't have the 10% increment from this person and the 50% from this and so on, can we still get it done? We haven't done that across-the-board analysis, but there are things that we have already chosen to delay. We shared with you that we don't plan to move to a two-year budget. I've also asked the finance director not to undertake some new cost allocation work that we were planning to do in the finance department, because I just, there are bits and pieces in the finance department's work plan I didn't feel that we were able to accomplish. But we haven't looked across the board yet.
So just to follow up, do you anticipate that there will be editing of that work plan in addition to, if these positions were, this contracts were to be funded, in addition to that, there would also be edits to the work plan?
I think we'll have to look at it. What's complicated is many of those projects have been started, and so we're going to need to look at whether or not we can sustain that work, or we're going to have to go back to community and say, it's going to take longer for us to produce that product.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. Appreciate the answers you've been giving. I want your help in doing a little bit of math, and I, maybe this will be, hopefully this won't be difficult.
Sure.
And the way I view this, yes, I know that we have a budget, that we have authorized the salaries and benefits for the positions that are currently vacant or have recently been made vacant. When I look at the total ask, I think it's 320. I believe the $100,000 for HR is all new.
Correct.
It's not fulfilling, backfilling for some vacancy.
That's correct.
And I look at the $60,000 for communications, what would you, if you just want to give me a rough estimate?
12,000.
I think he needs to finish the question.
So there's still $59,988?
48, yep, of needed budget.
Say that again. I didn't know.
So the 12 is what?
Anticipated salary savings from having.
Okay, so the incremental ask on top of what has already been authorized, when you net it all out, when we balance it at the end of the year, this looks like this is an additional 48 to what we think we would spend.
That is what I'm estimating.
Thank you. And the executive?
Executive would be new dollars.
I'm sorry?
New. All 160 would be new.
Okay. Okay, that one surprises me, because the position is vacant, so I, at least of the city administrator. There's, used to be two, you and the deputy, the city administrator and the deputy, now there's just the interim. So, okay, that number surprises me. What am I missing?
You're missing that when employees leave our employment, there are benefits that we still have to pay and contracts that we still have to fulfill.
Okay. Okay, so this is all new. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Chris, did I see your hand go up?
Yeah, just a couple of follow-on questions, and I'm going to pick on, pick up on Council Winterstein's, because I can't believe that the salary savings is $12,000 for the position. So you're saying the entire year that that position was going to cost us $12,000?
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Then, so if I look at a calendar year and we don't fill this position, what's the salary savings? It doesn't, that number doesn't foot for me.
Which position do you, are you referring to?
You said you have a vacant position in communications.
That's correct.
And so what do we pay, what is that pay grade for that position annually?
I think Councilmember Ray, it starts with the fact that there has been someone in that position.
Right, but there is no one in that position. Right, but there is no one in that position.
And then Emily can explain the delta of why it's 12,000.
Yeah, and, and I should have said 12 to 20. The lower cost estimate is if we're able to fill the position quickly. So there's one vacancy that is resulting in salary savings in communications, recently vacated. I will be marketing and recruiting for that position as soon as I possibly can. I anticipate that position, per my email, will be vacant for two and a half months, and that's what I'm chugging the salary savings up to after you take out some costs for benefits and that still have to be paid and marketing for the recruitment, et cetera. We come up with savings of about 12,000 to 20,000 for that time period.
Okay. Okay, so do you, on a monthly basis or quarterly basis or something, get a budget to actual report that shows what was budgeted on each of these line items and what our actual spend was and what the delta was?
I do, not on individual line items, but at the department, division, and what we call object code roll-up level.
Okay. Okay. Do you have an idea how many vacant positions there are citywide right now?
I don't at the moment. We had 44 last year. We are anticipating having about 55, 52 if the trend continues from kind of year-to-date and based off of year-to-year increase in recruitments.
Is that like, I don't know if my math is right, about 20% of the workforce?
That's harder math to do because some of that will include seasonal positions, and we may have a position that's vacant for, we may run that recruitment more than one time if we're not lucky the first time.
Good, that's perfect. So what's the, generally, how long does it take us to fill a vacancy?
Depends on the position.
Give me a range.
And this is my guesstimate here, anywhere from eight weeks to, we have had a position open for over a year because of this issue of not finding applicants that are qualified or, in that particular case that I'm thinking of, actually making two job offers that were turned down.
You know, and I recognize it's a, it's a difficult labor market right now. I mean, it's a, it's a competitive labor market, so. Do you have a sense of what our turnover rate is annually?
I can't remember what that number was last year. We gave that to council at the last council retreat. We could get back to you with that number.
That'd be awesome. That's it for.
Thanks. Council, Deputy Council President Batiste.
Thank you. Emily, what is the, so this is the plan for 2018. What is the plan going forward after 2018? What are your, what are your thoughts? I'm just curious in terms of human resources and recruiting and just, just that there's been turnover, there's been asks for full-time positions, and now we're looking at contingent staff, so if you could just talk a little bit about that.
Sure, in, in all three of those departments? Okay. So in human resources, as I mentioned, we would look at how contracting out the recruitment function is working, and if it's working well and we think that's cost-effective, for example, then we may continue to ask for an allocation within the HR budget to perform that task at a house. If for some reason we feel it's not the best model, or we can get better return on investment through requesting a full-time equivalent position in the 2019 budget, then we'll make that proposal at the departmental level because the process that we have is you get the department request, then it goes to the mayor's office, and then we look across the board at all of the requests and decide what to put forward to you. So I would anticipate we at least make the request at that level, at the department, mayor's office level.
So that would be for a recruiter?
Correct. Some, I couldn't tell you what the exact classification is, but that would be the primary function, yes. And then in communications, what does 2019 look like? It looks like we're fully staffed and there's no additional funds requested, so everybody's back in their seats. In exec, we're having ongoing conversations with council leadership about how to go about filling the spots in that department, so I'm not able to tell you at this moment, but I would expect we would also be fully staffed at some point in 2019.
Thank you.
And I, I should say, because I don't want somebody to say I didn't, I would expect that department director to also make a request for additional staffing in terms of that management analyst-level position that's lacking in the department right now in the 2019 budget, but whether or not that gets out as a mayor's request or proposed budget is to be seen.
Thank you.
Okay.
Looking for more questions? Could we have a motion? Oh, Councilmember Ramos?
Yeah, just, just for process, I'm just trying to look a little bit and ways that process could be, and, and our Services Safety Committee met this month on the 10th, and next month they'll meet on the 9th. So I'm just trying to figure a way that we could have made this through the process, and if two weeks ago at our council meeting, it was referred to Services of Safety and back, we could have had this here, having gone through the process and been here with a much more process, if this was brought forward just two weeks ago. I don't think most of this information is, you know, that new, so, and I mean, like, so I'm just looking at how that process, now at this point, if, if someone decided to recommend referring this to committee, now at this point with that, we wouldn't be able to get back until May, about 19th or something, it'd be the latter part, 21st, so it'd be, it'd be a good four-month delay, but we could have done it this month with just a week, head start here. So just question that a little bit. I want to say I know human resources, we've known they've been lean and mean for a long time, so that's like, that's nothing new. That's the one thing here that is, you know, has been around for a long time for, for looking at what we're doing there, and a compliment to work they've done over years there being lean and mean there on that. So I just want to, that, and then I'll let you go. Thank you.
So just before we start, Council President Marts, the two outstanding pieces of information that I've heard that aren't here this evening, what is the city's budget adjustment? I don't believe we've come with one. And what is the staff turnover rate? And I'm not hearing any other questions that are missing at this point in time.
I, I guess I did have one more.
What's one more?
And that was, how much have we already amended this budget or planned, have planned amended?
That's what I have. That was the budget amend, a budget adjustment. We haven't had a budget adjustment yet, and so it would include several items, including this one. So President Marts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My move to authorize an allocation of $320,000 to provide for additional staffing resources in human resources, communications, and the executive office, and direct the finance director to include the allocation in subsequent 2018 budget amendment utilizing the general fund.
Second?
Then moved and seconded, Council President Marts.
So, a couple of things on this. So is it needed? As we have heard this evening, a lot of this is, is as a result of things that have happened since we did the budget, both since when we looked at the budget and since when we approved the budget. Things come up. Timing, I understand the urgency on this, on the administration's part. Generally speaking, I like to see things go through committee first, and I understand why this concerns some of my fellow council members. But I, I look at these three areas. HR is, is, is the obvious first step. I mean, the, the first step when you're, you know, when there's water getting in your boat is you, you bail the water out, and HR is the, is the bucket with which you bail out the ship. Comms, you know, communications, this council and this administration value strongly our outreach into the community and having the resources to provide that communication in both directions, both, both seeking and sharing communications is a high priority. And the executive office, you know, we have had three full-time senior executives in this city since it was much smaller than it is today, and I understand, I think, that the two of you are, are, are doing a great job, but I understand why we are, there are things that we should be doing in the executive office that we're not doing currently. Finally, on availability, you know, I, I don't know what this revised number is. I know we have, you know, there's been conversation about that, we've seen other amendments already in early in April, but, you know, the proposed budget had a 34% margin on, on ending fund balance of the general fund, and that is as compared to a target of 15% to 20%. And I like having nice, high-ending fund balances for just these sorts of issues. As, as I've mentioned earlier, a lot of these needs are coming up because of things that have happened since December. That's why you have nice, healthy ending fund balances. So if we, if we, and by the way, 34%, as compared to 20%, that represents $7.1 million. So I'm quite confident we have not authorized 7.1, $7.1 million of additional spending. I would have remembered it. So I think it's, I think it's valuable to understand how this is in context to other additions that we've made since last fall, but because of stated urgency by the administration, I'm willing to view this as a little bit different of a process, and so that's why I made this motion tonight, and that's why I would support moving forward with the, with the motion that I've made. Thank you.
Councilmember Winterstein?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Earlier, you said you're going to keep track of questions, and if we can't answer the questions, maybe that would be part of the justification for moving on. I would, I would add, I think whenever we consider this type of question, I would, sometimes you just need to sleep on things. And I know, however, our, our cycle, it's not like we're meeting again tomorrow, and so there's, there's ramification for that because some, at least I'm speaking for myself, sometimes I just need, I'm, when I'm really taking something in for the first time, I need, I wish I had more time to think on it. I just want to throw that out there for that. I'm interpreting the numbers to say that the 100,000 for HR may become an ongoing cost and that the rest of the costs are one-time.
I don't know that the 100,000 will be the 100,000 in the future because it's partial year and it's consulting dollars versus full-time and benefits, but your basic premise, yes.
Right, so for the function that it would provide, this may be a harbinger of an ongoing cost, something, and where, for HR.
Correct, correct.
But you're, but the answer to your quest, the question earlier that what Mariah asked, you see fully staffed and if, what we get fully staffed in communications and staffed as currently planned in executive, then these would have been one-time costs.
Correct, with the caveat again being there may be other staffing requests in 19 that I've already spoken about, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray?
I'm really concerned with the comment that our work plan for this year and our budget for this year are out of balance. Again, being three months into the year, it just seems to me that we should not be putting together a work plan that we don't have a budget to support, and it's not good service to the people to make commitments if we don't think we can get them. So that concerns me. My number two concern is, is about budget visibility. We don't have it. I don't have it. I don't know if you guys got it. I don't have it. I don't know where we are compared to where we should be this year. I think that's something that we need to have. In terms of fund balances, yeah, it is great that we have fund balances, but to Councilmember Ramos's point, every time we take the fund balance to spend it on one thing, we don't have it to spend it on another thing because we don't have an infinite amount of money there. And then finally, it, I believe it is our job collectively to plan ahead and to have visibility six months, nine months, a year ahead of time. So I don't buy the argument that, well, shucks, this just, just happened. We need to have ways to get ahead of this, and we need to build in whatever mechanisms we need going forward so we're not a year from now having the same discussion about, oh, shucks, we need another $500,000 because there's something we didn't think about. And that's our job. That's our job to figure that stuff out. So going forward, I, I, I don't know how I feel about this agenda bill right now. I mean, I'm, I'm squarely on the fence, but I do know that I cannot support this unless I see something that lets me believe that next year we won't have the same discussion or even next month we won't have the same discussion, that we have a program in place and we have methods in place so that we can get ahead of this and start to budget and believe our budgets.
More Councilmember comments? The P Council Batiste, and then Councilmember Hunt.
So I, I wanted to echo some of the comments from Council President Marts in terms of if, if we, I can understand some of the comments from my fellow council members that, to, in terms of timing and having this go through a committee, and that, I, I think that that's always the way that we, that we want to structure that, but in regard to just, I guess, I draw back on my background, both in operations and in human resources, when there are, when there are staffing changes, when there's FTE turnovers and people out on leave, and there can be a variety of things happening, and, and often at the operational side of the business is, is sometimes what starts to suffer. When I hear comments about employee well-being and working a lot of hours and people may be talking about that as they're, as they're exiting and turnover, that, that concerns me, and, and we, we do have work plans in place, and some of these things can be very much unforeseen. So I'll, I'll talk about communications. I, I think that with, there can always be in terms of organizations having turnover or having people on leave, that's a short-term time limit, and it seems like the right thing to do to bring in staff to, to cover that in terms of communication. And we, we also have, on the executive side, we are down people. We, we don't have as many people doing the jobs as we need to have doing the jobs right now. And again, I, just to comment on some of the things that Councilmember Ray has talked about, having that, that planning in place and being able to look into the future and, and what is that going to look like next year? That, that was really the crux of why I was asking that question, is what kind of planning can we have going forward to make sure that, that we are, that we are fully staffed? But that doesn't often stop in organizations, all sorts of changes. People go out on leave, there's turnover, there's retirements, there's all sorts of things that happen. So I would be in support of, of moving forward with this. I'm going to talk about human resources last. Human resources and recruiting is something that, that I think that we, we really should think about. I, I look at the kinds of, the things that were on the list for the kinds of things that the HR director could be looking at if they weren't probably heads-down with recruiting, which I know that they have to be because it says the number, year-over-year recruitments have increased an average of 55% in the past three years and 300% since 2013. Recruiting is an incredibly time-consuming job in every single way, both administratively and the time it takes to source, and it's just so time-consuming. I manage this right now, and so I, I understand this very deeply. And on the human resources side, some of the things that we're talking about are completing the class and comp survey, enhancing the labor management protocol, collective bargaining. I mean, some of those things are jobs within themselves, and so having a very small group do the recruiting and try to be strategic in HR is oftentimes an impossible task. So to me, when I look at the numbers associated with human resources, that makes really, really perfect sense that, that we need some help there. And so I, I would like to talk about what, what are we going to do going forward after 2018, but for now, I understand the reasons for this, and I would be in support of this.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. So you made a comment that this, the comment that I stated earlier, which was good project management dictates that you have a resource plan, and I think that that- that that is really important. And I think that this is proposed as a sort of temporary tangential solution to that, but I think we also need to really look at that work plan and look at the resource plan associated with that work plan, and try to use that to get ahead of some of these issues, so that we do have more time to contemplate and maybe come up with different options or different solutions. In the summary statement on human resources, it actually refers to the human resources as a historical shortage, and so it has been a long time that this has been a need. I think, in my opinion, if this had gone to committee, we could have had a lot of our questions answered in a more thorough way, in the way that committees are supposed to work. And I respect that we're being asked to vote on this today, but I would ask that in the future, we do be given the opportunity to vet this at committee, because our role on council is to ask questions. And I think that that's why we have the committee process. And I think at least some of these items could have gone through the more thorough process.
Thank you. Two more councilmembers have not spoken, Goodman and Ramos. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. So I, so I, some of the, some, at least a couple of the asks that you're making tonight, it's my understanding are made because of some fairly recent events. And I think that if you would have brought this earlier, a few weeks ago, you very likely would have been back before us again with another ask shortly, because those events would not have happened yet. One of the, two of the vacancies, one of the vacancies wouldn't have happened, and one of them we would have been unsure about the future of that vacant position without being specific. The, I agree that, you know, it's always ideal if we go through committee, and, you know, when I was on leadership, when Paul was on leadership, you know, Mary Lou was on leadership, you know, we stress that, we try to do that. But I think it's our job to also recognize when we need to be flexible. And my concern tonight is that we do a disservice to our community if we continue to allow what I call a, you know, a pretty significant short staff, that, in my own words, what I'm hearing is, we're going to have a problem getting our work done. And if we can't get our work done, things have to suffer, and a lot of what's on the work plan, it's not just, you know, ooh, we want to do this fun stuff. It's, there are mandatory things that have to be done. So we can't always cut the work plan to meet short staffing needs. But again, I'm going to support this, because I think it does a disservice to our community to perpetuate the problem by focusing on the fact that we should have brought this a few weeks ago, when I think the ask would have been different a few weeks ago, and then you would have been back before us again. Now, we're within a couple of weeks with additional asks, because I think we still would have had unknown vacancies in a couple of positions.
Thank you. Councilmember Ramos?
Yes, I'm, I'm torn here, because I want to support our staff. I want to have a good staff, and they need help. But I am torn on the process. I do believe this two weeks could have gone through the process easily, with a little bit more advanced thought here. I know the human resources have been lean and mean for years, and I want to support them for sure. But I really do, that process is important. It's important not just for us on council, but it's important for the public to see in always way, because I'm always there whenever you spend money in one place, you're not spending it somewhere else on some other priority, and you may not, you may not know what that is right now, but it's not being spent somewhere else. And you'll never know that until you look at the whole budget. And that's why we try to balance those budgets and look at those things. And just because we're lucky right now that we have plenty of money in any fund balance, would we consider this differently if our any fund balance was right at the 20% mark? You know, where would we be looking at those things? So that's, that's the tough part. Just because you have it doesn't mean you, you know, you just jump at those things. So, but we do need some work done, and we do have some good folks, and I don't want to get folks burned out.
Yes, before I go to Councilmember Winterstein, so we have heard from everybody once. I'm going to come back to Paul now and give anybody else a chance for closing comments, if you'd like. Councilmember Winterstein?
Madam Mayor, I'd also like just a quick chance to talk about how we'll go about resource planning in the future, and some pieces that I think council can assist in.
Would you like to do that now, before we go to final comments?
Sure. So I want to recognize, acknowledge, in fact, I have already admitted that we can do a better job of resource planning. We can continue to try to calculate what we can handle at full staffing capability, which I think we did. We knew it was going to be a stretch, but there wasn't the support that was desired, and so we made that calculated choice to stretch and try to accomplish all that we have set before us for 2018. However, these were unplanned events, and so we don't even have that complement of staff to work with. The other thing that I would say is, we could do a better job, and you can also help us with this, in estimating the amount of time that's needed to complete projects. We don't always, as staff, control the destiny of particular projects, and new tasks get added throughout the year, and additional desires for outreach, for example, or for extra steps in process, extra research adds to the work plan. So there's a whole list of tasks that weren't even on the work plan that get added in a given year, or more sub-bolts underneath each task. And that's fine, that's fine, but it is very hard to measure going into a year, how long a certain project is going to take, because they shift around. So I just wanted to add that, that even when we as staff try to plan resources appropriately, there's a piece that's outside of our control.
I'm going to go back for comments. Councilmember Winterstein?
I'll make them quick. Two things. Emily, I appreciate those last comments, and I've been thinking about Councilmember Ray's comments. I think you were kind of responding to this idea of a work plan and having a proper staffing plan, and believing that we have a budget and a staff and a work plan that we can be successful with. And I'm speaking for myself when we go through this budget, but also as we put additional, as a council, put additional requests on the administration, I accept some culpability for the situation, because we approve the budget and we put the demands on staff. So we are, have to accept some of that, and I readily accept some of that ourselves. It's not just one-sided issue. And the way of the comment, it's going to be really brief, is, for the record, I don't consider us lucky to have the ending fund balance that we have. It comes through some very prudent fiscal management and some deliberate decisions as well. Yes, we have an economy that helps, but a lot of that is based upon specific policy and decisions that we've made. So I do accept the argument that, yeah, we knew we were going to have some ending fund balance, but we didn't know what we were going to use it for. And this is one of those circumstances that categorically you want to be ready for if they arise. And that's what some of the balance, ending fund balance would be used for. So I do accept that argument.
You give your comments. Councilmember Ray?
So, trying to figure out how exactly I want to put this. I want to be supportive. I know we have a mission to do. I know it is hard work. I know it takes resources to get the job done. I appreciate the work that you've put into putting together this summary of the positions. It's very good. But it feels like a bit of a Band-Aid to me. We are sticking our finger in a dike and waiting for it to pop out somewhere else. So I can support this, but I would really encourage the administration to dig into this and really help us to understand what the root causes of these problems are, so that we can start to attack the root causes, instead of just what I think are symptomatic.
Look at me, too. This is the, heard, noted. Thank you very much. That is very well-stated. More final comments? We have five other councilmembers who may want to weigh in. Councilmember Goodman?
I just want to follow up, and I agree with Councilmember Ray's comments about the Band-Aid on the problem. And some of the issues are not new, but for numerous reasons that we've already talked about, it's at a point where we need to, we need to put those Band-Aids out, or we're going to suffer even further. But we also have some work to do regarding, we've already talked about the resource planning, but I also think that we've got some issues that we should probably look into, that, I shouldn't say issues we should look into. We have some further work to do to determine what we might do to help us not be at this place again for the period of time we've been at this place.
Thank you. Council President Martz?
Thanks. I also want to say I share, Councilmember Ray, your, some of your concerns about the, what we want to do in the longer term to get more comfortable with where we're at. The issue of retention is something that actually, at the leadership level, we've started talking about and wanting to get our arms around, and see what is our retention rate? How does it compare with other municipalities on the East Side? What is the time to fill positions? How does that compare with other cities on the East Side? And so that's an important issue. You also raised a question around, you know, how do we plan for handling some of these exits? And, you know, you know, I say, well, we can use the ending fund balance, but I also think it's worth having a conversation. Are there other mechanisms? Are there other best practices on how to do that, that isn't necessarily straight from the ending fund balance, but might have a different mechanism? So I think those are both good questions.
Thank you. Three other councilmembers wishing to provide final comments or not? Deputy Council President Patisse?
I appreciate, I'm going to go back to Councilmember Ray again, and I really appreciate the comments and what we've talked about in terms of how we can look forward into the future. I will point out that so many of the, of the questions that we're talking about right now have to do with HR being able to work strategically. We're talking about retention, we're talking about succession planning, and we're talking about being able to build those staffing plans for the future. And so I think that that's all really, really important, but I think that we might be talking about a piece of it right now, in terms of allowing human resources to do that more strategic work, as opposed to recruiting all day. So...
Thank you. Councilmember Ramos, or Councilmember Hunt? Okay. Seeing no more discussion, I'll call for the vote. The motion, sorry, authorizing an allocation of $320,000 to provide for additional staffing resources in the human resources, communications, and the executive office, and directing the finance director to include the allocation in subsequent 2018 budget amendment utilizing the general fund. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next order of business this evening is for Good of the Order. Do councilmembers have anything for Good of the Order? Okay, I have a little peek ahead for Good of the Order. On our April 24 Council of the Whole meeting, there are four agenda items. The I-90 auxiliary lane project, which was something that I referenced this evening, Issaquah Hobart Road Front Street Corridor Study, emergency management will be discussed as a topic, and there will be an update on the transit-oriented development. On the May 7 regular council meeting, at this time there are four proposed agenda items, and I say proposed, because some of them will still be in committee, are still in committee. A public hearing on the updated water system plan, an agenda bill on creating the Visit Issaquah organization, agenda bill on amendments to the Issaquah Municipal Code regarding wireless communication facilities, and amendment to the IMC and Central Issaquah standards regarding inclusionary zoning for Central Issaquah. That's all I have. We will be going into executive session this evening. This executive session will be held this evening to discuss collective bargaining sessions per RCW 42.30.140 per N4, and pending and potential litigation per RCW 42.30.110 per N1 per NI. These items are expected to last 35 minutes. Action is anticipated to follow in open session. The council will recess into executive session at 10:06. The council will recess into executive session at 10:06. The council will recess into executive session at 10:06.